Calling this meeting the order. This is the Amador County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, April 9th, 2024. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the public, which stands the nation under God indivisible, deliver deeds as all.
Board met and closed session this morning. Items we met on. Item one, conference labor negotiators update was given. Item two, conference county council anticipated litigation, claim was denied. And confidential minutes for March 26th, 2024 were approved. Moving on, public matters not on the agenda. Is there any members of the public that like to address the board in any subject? If there is, please state your name for the record and sign in if you would.
Morning Board. Michelle Gallagher, Code Enforcement. I received another grant from Caltrans and I'm working with the Air District. And so on April 19th through the 21st, that's a Friday, Saturday, and Sunday in about two weeks, from nine to three at the lower baseball field at Pioneer Park, we will be accepting green waste, metal appliances, as long as they do not have Freon, so we won't accept Freon appliances, and then tires without rims. And this will be a first come, first served basis, so it is open to anybody in the county. And I do have some flyers that I'll give to each of you, so if you have someone that you know that would like one, they can get it. Any questions?
Great. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
We advertised it last night.
Nobody in Zoom? With that, moving on, for an approval agenda with one addendum?
So moved.
We'll put that addendum as item 4K on the regular agenda.
4K?
4K. We have a motion by Forster or by Crew, and we use second, second by Axe. On favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Carries five zero unanimous. Moving down approval of items on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any members of public that like to comment on this issue? CNN, we have a motion by Forster, second by Axe, on favor?
Aye.
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 Oh, was it?
By Axe.
Oh, he's, okay. So Heather, motion is by Axe, second was by Forster. Sorry about that, Frank. So, any opposed? Carries unanimous. Oh, moving on down. On the regular agenda, we have item 4A, Child Abuse Prevention Council. Is there anybody here from, oh, there we are. Good morning, Nina. Good morning.
Good morning. So, good morning. I'm Nina Machado. I'm the Executive Director of First Five Amador, and we also oversee the Child Abuse Prevention Council. And I wanted to introduce our new coordinator, Gina Whitaker. She's in charge of our Child Abuse Prevention Council activities, Resilient Amador, and some of our family engagement activities as well. We're happy to have her on board, so.
Welcome.
Thank you. We wanted to share, I did provide some pinwheels for prevention pins to the deputy clerk for her to distribute to anyone in, on the floor who would be, and, oh, thank you Supervisor Axe. If they're interested or can't find theirs from last year, we have more in our supplies for you. And then also, we also shared, it's a calendar, and this is a campaign that was decided on by the Resilient Amador, which is under the Child Abuse Prevention Council. And this particular campaign was created to actually encourage folks to be kind to one another, whether, and then to note that on the calendar, whether it's an act of kindness that you do yourself or that you witness. This was done, it was, Gina did a fabulous job with the design, and it's also on one of the small buses for Amador Transit. And the schools participated in it, some of the community organizations, nonprofits. So it was really widely distributed. We're excited to see it, just encouraging people to be a little bit more kind to one another and acknowledging that with children, so that it becomes part of their everyday practice, as well as adults. We could always use a little reminder here and there. So the pinwheels for prevention are around the county as well. You'll see some in front of your office here with the sign that describes what the actual campaign represents. So we have them in Volcano and Pioneer and throughout, throughout the county. We, also, I wanted to acknowledge, I noticed Ann Watts is on, is zooming in right now, and to acknowledge the efforts that her staff does on a daily basis to really try and support families during challenging times. Their staff has a really tough job, and they just do a wonderful job. So we can't thank them enough for their efforts. And just before we, we wrap up, wanted to note, we just don't want to lose sight of the fact that more than 90% of child welfare calls are drug and alcohol related, and the importance of keeping our eye on prevention. If we can, if we can help youth make good decisions about not misusing alcohol and drugs, then those are our future parents, and we will have future heartaches down the road for a lot of people. And it's also a cost savings. I mean, if you even want to get down to brass tacks on that, it's cost a lot of money when things do head the wrong way. So just for us to all, as a community, keep in mind how important prevention efforts are. It's hard to measure prevention, and so it's oftentimes kind of put to the side because it's hard to measure those outcomes, but they are really important efforts. And as a community, I think we can band together and perhaps keep our eye on that ball and help address the drug and alcohol issues. So, with that.
Do you have any pinwheels in ION?
Do we have pinwheels in ION yet?
I sent an email out to the City Hall asking if they would allow pinwheels, and I did not get a response yet.
Why don't you just get them to me or whatever? I'll make sure they get up.
Thank you.
At the elementary school down there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I can add to your act of kindness. I was over at Lowe's the other day, and my wife needed some quarter inch plywood for her hobby, and a gentleman come running over there to help me load this quarter inch sheet of plywood. It was like, I could do it myself, but he came running over, and I thanked him profusely. So the kindness is out there.
Yes. It's true. Yes.
You know, one thing I will say, I probably could have used you folks around when I was growing up for child, child abuse, but I had a great time. So I think a lot of times, you want to take good care of children, but sometimes if you don't let them have a little excitement, a little bit of fun, maybe a little bit of danger, kids will find something that's probably not good to do. I mean, I had enough excitement and danger growing up. It's like, you know, I don't need any other stuff. I had enough. But yeah, children, Supervisor Crew and I went through our, the scholarship applications and some of the, I don't know how much are embellished, but a lot of them are probably factual. A lot of the things the kids write about their life, it's kind of, it's kind of sad. I mean, and, but they do have a choice. You know, you got all your fingers, all your toes, there's a world, you still do well. But kids should grow up in a good world, and not all of them do.
And there is something that, I mean, safe risk taking is something that, you know, you talk about even with young ones. I mean, letting them play outside and dig in the dirt and, you know, hammer some nails in. I mean, you want, you want children to be able to learn skills and, like I said, safe risk taking, and yet be able to have that guidance to let them know when it's a, it's a bridge too far, you know, and to keep them safe.
Oh, yeah, if you climb a tree, you fall a tree, as long as you're not too high, you bang your head, and you go, hey, you know, there's things hurt in life.
Yes.
If you're always 100% sheltered.
No.
We have a resolution here.
Yes.
If you'd like, I'll read the resolution, and you would like a picture with it?
Thank you, that'd be wonderful.
Okay.
Thank you.
First up, how about if we have a, maybe a motion to approve this resolution?
Got it.
Second.
Motion by Crew, second by Axe, on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Carries unanimous. This is the Amador County Board of Supervisors resolution proclaiming the month of April was Amador County Child Abuse Prevention Month, whereas all children deserve to grow up in a safe and nurturing environment to ensure they reach their full potential, and whereas child abuse neglects a serious problem affecting every segment of our community, and finding a solution requires input and action from everyone, and whereas child abuse can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that have long-lasting consequences or victims of abuse, and whereas our children are our most valuable resource and will help shape the future for Amador County, and whereas protective factors are conditions that reduce or eliminate risk and promote the social, emotional, developmental well-being of children, and whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of the partnerships created between child welfare professionals, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies, and families, and whereas communities must make every effort to promote, promote programs, activities, and policies that create strong and thriving children and families, whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to promote the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, and nurturing environment, whereas prevention remains the best defense for children and families. Therefore, it's hereby resolved by the Board of Supervisors, the County of Amador, or State of California, and the Board is hereby proclaiming the month of April 2024, 2024 as Amador County Child Abuse Prevention Month, and we urge all citizens to use this time to reaffirm our dedication to preventing child abuse and neglect and protecting our community's children. Was passed by the Board, April 9th, 2024.
Thank you. And another note, I know you all participate in a lot of service organizations and foundations and such in the county, which really does help support children and families, so thank you for your efforts there, too.
Is there any members of public that like to comment on this? CNN? Move on to item 4B. This is discussion of possible action relative presentation by Public Works Director Richard Veal regarding the PG&E work currently underway on Shake Ridge Road and the associated repairs that are planned after that work is completed.
Chairman, I asked Rich to come in and just update the Board. We've been getting some calls and concerns about the condition of the road after PG&E has gone through, and just to let everybody know that there is a plan.
It's pretty ugly up there.
Morning Board. Good morning. Richard Veal is Public Works Director. As Mr. Riley has mentioned, PG&E is undertaking a undergrounding project up on Shake Ridge Road, undergrounding power lines. The extent of the work on Shake Ridge Road, it's approximately from Ramthorn Grade up to Allen Road. And they're, in that process of undergrounding lines, they're also working on some of the side roads as well to underground lines up there. Their initial intent was to try to keep the lines undergrounded as much as possible out of the road section. However, if you're familiar with that road up there, it's fairly narrow, there's a lack of adequate shoulders, and the ditch line's usually right at the edge of the, of the edge of pavement. And then there's usually some slope, sloping away from the road and such. So it's worked out that the majority of their work is actually, the undergrounding is occurring under the road itself. It's, for the most part, the, their lines are running under the westbound lane of Shake Ridge Road, coming down the hill from Allen down to Ramthorn Grade. You know, with that work, they're, they're doing that work per our Public Works standard PW-11. They're required to do compaction testing, and we've done some, we do numerous checks to make sure that compaction testing is being completed and, and the appropriate compaction levels are being obtained by their work crews. There's also some, what we call, let's see, I don't know the words. Pull boxes, excuse me. I knew the word would come up on me. They are placed inside, in the traffic lane, and they're, they're a square box, a balt, maybe three by three. They're placed kind of in the center of that lane so that you would straddle the box for the most part if you're traveling up and down the roads. That's there for access for, for maintenance and future repairs. Those boxes will be recessed such that they will not be, at least the plan is, so that they're, they will not be an issue when we do plowing operations during the winter months. Right now, their utility trench is with temporary pavement. The plan is for them to come back and to remove that temporary pavement and do, and to provide a permanent pavement patch. And that work will be done at the end of their project, so. So right now, it's kind of in a rough condition. It's much like if you do a house remodeling, it's a mess while it's happening, but at the end, it gets tidied up and buttoned up. One of the concerns we've had is because the works primarily in one traffic lane, traffic's being pushed over to the opposite lane, and whether it's their construction equipment or just the traveling public, part of that, in certain spots, part of that lane is deteriorating, especially along the pavement edge. And so those areas will be repaired as well. Again, will be at the end of the project when they bring in a paving contractor and get everything done at one time. The, the nature of the trench in the westbound lane is such that we feel that when the, if they were to cut and do a pavement patch, the size of the patch would be such that, per our standard, it looks like they'll be repairing the whole width of the lane with pavement, so that we don't just have, you know, a 11-foot pavement with a seven-foot patch in it, so the whole 11 feet will be repaired. And then in the areas where the, there's some damage on the opposite lane and such, from what I saw, I envisioned probably a total lane repair or two. So there'll be, so I would envision seeing that westbound lane with a total pavement repair, and in areas of the eastbound lane where we've had issues, that would be a total pavement repair as well. We met with people from, the folks from PG&E in the field last week, and we discussed these items, and, and they understand sometimes when they get into these projects, that the road condition tends, in some cases, to be better when they're done than it was when they showed up. And in this case, it may be that in areas that they're working. So that's kind of where we're at with that. So, you know, from a public standpoint, I would encourage a little patience, understand it doesn't look good right now, but, you know, we've been assured in working with PG&E that once their work is done, that the appropriate pavement restoration will occur.
Going forward, is there any warranty on any of this? Like on 88, when work was done on Covert's, they sunk about three inches, and they had to go back and do the warranty work to bring them up to standard. So if that, anything like that occurs, is there warranty work?
Yeah, I mean, if their, if their work doesn't hold up, I mean, that's the whole idea with compaction, but again, you know, anything can happen. I mean, we take tests at certain intervals, the test is good at that spot where the test is taken, so maybe areas in between may not hit it. So, yeah, we'd be watching that, and if there's any sinking and whatever, we would be in contact and have them do, come back and do necessary repairs.
Thank you.
Richard, I, I meant to call you yesterday to ask you, is there a target date for this to be finished, buttoned up, back to normal? I don't have that information with me right now. I know they're, based on what I've seen and such. Pretty slow going, isn't it? It, it is. But, you know, I expect probably by late spring or by the summer that it should be taken care of, at least in the areas that they're working at now on Shake Ridge Road. As we get a little closer, maybe, I think people would, they can live with it, they know the Fourth of July is going to be over. Right. If we can find a date that, and I know it's maybe early, but.
This is Supervisor Brown. My question is, is it going to be kind of like Buckhorn Ridge Road, you know, where we had to dig out along there, you know, for trenching, and then, so they did one lane?
Yeah, it would look similar to that.
Now, the, you know, they had to do a complete lane digout so it can match the other lane. I just want to make sure we don't have a offset, you know, where they just do an overlay or something.
Right. I mean, if, if we're doing, it would need to, say, mill out a portion and repave so that, yeah, everything would be.
Okay.
Even going across. And just as a reminder- And just as a reminder, too, I know the folks that live up there, if they remember last winter, we had a lot of snow. And the, the power lines were down and in certain roads, we could not plow because the power lines were down and, you know, we're, our, our workers are trained not to mess with power lines. So if the line laying across the road, we don't touch it. And, and, you know, especially up on Allen Road, I know that was a real issue last year where people didn't have power, the road wasn't plowed out and, and some people were, you know, they're doing the best they can, but some people were in need of services and such. And so, you know, with, with an underground on these lines, that eliminates those kind of issues because there's, you know, there's not going to be any lines laying on the ground for us to be a problem for us as an impediment for plowing and such. And so, you know, there, it's, it's tough now. Like I say, it's like doing a house remodel when it's going on, it's a pain in the neck, it's dirty, it's inconvenient and such. But when it's done, you know, the benefits will be there for everybody.
As far as those vaults in the road, yeah, they should be recessed because snow plowing could be a real problem. And I'd like to see wherever possible, even a little bit harder PG&E, put them off the side of the road, not in the roadway.
Well, there's, there's a couple of things. One is obviously cost, you know? If you're going to have to dig into an embankment to put a vault in, you're probably going to have to build a wall around so that you can be able to access the.
I'm saying where it's reasonably possible. I mean, if they feel a little bit of pain, get them off the road.
Yeah. I, I know probably from a standpoint of locating and knowing where the lines are, at least if I was doing the work, I'd hate to have my lines zigzagging out of the road. You know, if you're in the road and you got to zig out to get to the pull box and it comes back in, I can see that where that could be a problem in the future, knowing where your lines are and maintaining and that sort of thing. But yeah, the point is well taken.
Also, something else I'd wonder about, have you, have you asked them why they're not using maybe like a rock saw or like a trencher rather than excavator?
I have not. And I did ask or requested if they had a representative available today. And unless there's someone on Zoom, I'm not sure if there's one here. So they could answer that question and any other questions the board had, so.
Well, I'd still ask them that because.
Sure.
An excavator is a little more intrusive. If you're digging and tearing up, whereas, whereas rock saw or trencher, I don't think it affects your base of your road as much. Also, I would like, I really, I don't want to see a checkerboard up there where you got, you know, patch, pavement, patch, pavement, patch, pavement, because they never end up well. I'd push as much as you can towards getting an overlay done on it. And it might be cheaper in the long run, really, you figure the dig outs and, and then if, if, and then they're going to have problems with the road probably settling and we may come back and say, hey, you know, you come back and refix this. So I'd try, I'd try to get them to do that.
Yeah, and that's one of the, the, the things that's worked into our standard where if you, the majority of your lane is a trench, just redo the whole lane. And I think from a contractor standpoint, you know, other than a little extra material for the pavement, it's the amount of effort to do the paving is relatively the same. You just, you know, if you're doing grinding or whatever, you just set the machine a little wider and, and to do it. So, and then, like you say, we get a better product because you have less joints in the.
We're less loud, we'll be going after them the year after with complaints, issues. Any members of the public like to comment on this issue? No Zoomers. Board, you're all done? Thank you, Richard.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you, Richard.
Hey, we're up there. What everybody's been waiting for, this is item 4C, Amador County Wine Heritage District. Discussion of possible action relative to introduction of ordinance regarding the potential formation of Amador County Wine Heritage District and levy of an assessment on wineries. Mr. Destasio, would you like to comment on this?
Maybe you could, John, kind of lay out where you're at in this and I'm sure we have some comments on it.
Yeah.
We'll take the comments and maybe we can address those.
So Chairman Onetto, Supervisors, thank you for having me back today. I really thought I would kick off this public hearing with an update on where we're at from the last time I spoke with you. I'm John Destasio and the current president of the Vintners Association, owner of Destasio Vineyards and selected to kind of be the point person on this Heritage District proposal. So just by way of background, real quickly, this really, this effort started two years ago. It came out of a strategic plan adopted by the winery members of the Vintners Association. And the primary objective of that strategic plan was to identify a source of sustainable funding so that we could market the region, turn it into more of a destination, spread out traffic rather than focusing everything on a few events a year. A wine heritage district, a self-assessment district or a beneficial business assessment district was the means that was selected to achieve this objective. And then we started down the road. We conducted a feasibility study. We determined that there was, it was viable based on a 1% assessment of the direct-to-consumer sales tax within Amador County. We conducted petitions. We did gathering, petition gathering effort and secured support of 40 wineries totaling 60% of the estimated assessment. So that's kind of the weighted review. The law requires 51% and as I said, we achieved 60 and that triggers the ability to go forward for public consideration. We've since secured additional support petitions that will be provided as part of this process. And we think we're probably, when we turn those into the county, obviously all of this for confidentiality reasons is not available to us. It's available to the county and/or Civitas, our legal contractor, under a non-disclosure agreement. But I believe once we provide these additional petitions that we have, that we'll be closer to 70 to 80% of the total assessment. And we'll provide all of that between now and the, and the final public hearing. We have done extensive outreach. We used a firm called MMS Strategies who does formation activities. They have deep experience with assessment districts of all types. And they have a record of calls, emails and/or petition drop-off attempts at every O2 licensed winery in the county. So that's a record we can also provide of the efforts made to reach people. We've conducted also a vote of all of the O2 licensed wineries in the county. We sent that by registered mail recently. We did receive 46 ballots, 74% were in support. This is a one winery, one vote tally, not the weighted assessment tally. Again, we expect that this number has actually grown recently. The proposed boundary for the assessment district is the county. The proposed assessment is 1% on direct-to-consumer taxable transactions within Amador County only. Some of the earlier proposals had that language, so it was not quite as clear. And we've made sure that that language will ultimately be part of the management district plan, that the county is responsible for considering and potentially approving that, making sure that it was very explicit, that it's really only transactions that are taxable within Amador County. The collection is based on local sales and the marketing will be focused accordingly, raising awareness to reach new consumers in Sacramento, Reno, the Greater Bay Area, in coordination with Visit Amador, to position Amador County again as a destination versus just a day trip location. The term is five years by law. This automatically have approved sun sets in five years and it must be renewed using this same process. And just anecdotally, I did ask Civitas, who's done hundreds of these, how many of them, once approved, when they were up for renewal, didn't go forward the second time? And there was only one in their recollection of over 180 that opted not to renew. In most cases, people, once they get in it, they work out the kinks, they understand the value, they might iterate it some, but in all cases, they're, they're typically renewed. We will be required to report to the county annually to ensure the expenditures are done by category, that they conform to the management district plan that would be adopted and ultimately serve as our legal charter if approved. As mentioned, we're coordinating with Visit Amador, the Chamber of Commerce to assure alignment and synergy. We know today's hearing is to allow public comment on the proposal, but we wanted to provide you with an update and know that we've added support and we have gained momentum. There's still work to be done and ultimately, the management district plan is ultimately what is within the county's scope to approve. And again, that outlines term, scope, categories of budget and, and also what the boundary is in the assessment level. We have, just as we came here to get the initial resolution of intent, we have now gone to the cities of Plymouth and Sutter Creek and they have approved their part of this so that the assessment could be collected in those jurisdictions and we're scheduled, and those were both by unanimous vote, by the way, and we're scheduled to go in mid-April to Amador City. I have made a presentation there already. So with that, I know there's other people that want to comment publicly and I'll be happy to answer any questions as, as necessary.
I need some clarification.
Supervisor, can I jump in real quick before we? So there's two things that are happening today. One is the public meeting. The public hearing is in May. There's a two-step process. And there's also the introduction of the ordinance that goes with this. So just like any ordinance, you'll, you'll, you can introduce, waive the reading and then put it over for adoption if and when. It would go in sort of conjunction with approval of the plan at the next hearing.
And if there's something needs to be changed in the ordinance, when do we?
You could tell, if, if there's any changes in the ordinance that you want to direct us to include, you can do that today and we'll have it changed for when it comes back.
Okay. Couple of questions, Mr. Destasio.
Yep.
On page 16 in our packet, the formation process, March 12, it says that consent must be received from the jurisdiction prior to the jurisdictions, prior to the final public hearing for their jurisdiction to be included. Now, by jurisdiction, does that mean the Amador County, well, Amador City would be a jurisdiction, Sutter Creek would be a jurisdiction and your association would be a jurisdiction?
Well, the, the, Amador County and, Amador, excuse me, Amador City, Sutter Creek and Plymouth would all be jurisdictions. And they, they basically have to pass a resolution to allow for the county to do this assessment collection within their jurisdiction because there's O2 licensed wineries within their jurisdictions. There's several O2 licensed wineries, by the way, that are also listed in I own, but none of them reside within the city limits, so therefore they're not in the jurisdiction.
And your winery association is not considered a jurisdiction then? So your inclusion by you is by preponderance of getting the majority, that, that would include all then, sweep everyone in?
Yes. The, the way that the, the law works is that if the, if the assessment district is, is supported, then anyone that's an O2 licensed winery that resides within the boundary of Amador County would be subject to the assessment.
Can you explain the, the weighted vote again? Now, is it a weighted vote for this process to be approved by the wineries?
No, the, the wineries, basically, they, they submit via, vis a vis a petition, their support for the initiative. And by looking at that, you look at which wineries have supported. We provide that data that the county then calculates. They then calculate of the sales tax pool that's applicable to the 1% assessment, how does that, how is that weighted relative to contribution of the, to the total assessment? So in other words, if there's a hundred dollar assessment and the wineries that provide support comprise 80% of that assessment in terms of being the largest payers, then you have an 80% weighted support for it.
And going forward, once the district is established, is it going to be weighted or is it going to be one vote per member?
No, the, the law requires that we establish a board that's based on proportionality. It's not defined with specificity, but the idea would be to have a governance structure and elections for the new 501(c) that would be established to have so many votes from different categories of wineries.
What do you mean by categories?
So it's, you typically, because the law requires proportionality, effectively, the largest payers should have some proportional say in the governance of the organization. So again, it's not outlined in the management district plan because the management district plan, if only basically says, what you would approve would say that we would be establishing a new 501(c) and that would be incumbent on us to replace the current Vintners Association with a new organization that would establish elections, a new board of directors and bylaws. And the intent would be that we would do it in a way that's, that's equitable but still has proportionality.
So that, what's confusing is we got a letter from, or an email from one of your largest Vintners and they indicated they were fine as long as it was proportional, but it wasn't proportional. So they.
We, we haven't finalized the governance. Those are discussions that we're having right now to try to land on something that's equitable plus proportional. And it's not as, it, it definitely won't be one winery, one vote. It'll definitely have to be some proportionality, whether that's seating so many board members of one tranche of wineries, so many of another and so many of another, so that you have broad representation but also a level of proportionality.
When we see some objections based on that, it's hard to vote for it when you don't have that in the wording in place yet.
Yeah, and part of the, the issue that probably complicated this some is, and we still have time to figure out what we want to put in there, but the management district plan, typically the way these are done is that when it's completed, you have a governing body that may already be in place, vis a vis a Vintners Association. But the intent of this, early on from when we started, it would be that the current Vintners Association would be dissolved and the Heritage District would take its place as a nonprofit. So, I mean, we can certainly talk more about what that would look like, but in terms of the approval of the management district plan to authorize the assessment and the boundary, the governance piece of it is typically not included in that, nor our specific budgets, nor our work plans, because none of those then can really change over the five-year term.
For me, it's kind of like putting the cart before the horse. And it, you're asking us to vote on something that we don't see pretty much in concrete what it's going to be.
But John, you said the legislation kind of requires some form of proportional representation, so.
It does.
But that has to be determined.
It's not explicit because governing bodies can take different forms, but the intent is that the, the largest payers have some proportional say consistent with their contribution. But by the same token, it doesn't say they're the only ones that have say. You have to figure out, again, and it's incumbent on us to figure out how to find the sweet spot in that.
Have you?
We've given some.
You have any ideas?
Yeah, we've given, we've given thoughts to it. We're having discussions about it. We've had a committee that we've had on this from the outset and we can certainly prior, well, prior to the May 4. prior to the May 14th, provide maybe a straw proposal of what we're thinking about and how it would look.
Probably be good, yeah.
Even if it doesn't get included in the management district plan.
Yeah, I think that's probably going to be the real rub, is the proportionality.
Mr. DeSasio?
Yep.
You said there's hundreds of these districts been set up around. Is there... Did you look for a rural ag district that maybe you could...
Yeah.
You know, where a copycat world, why reinvent the wheel if you at least had some their structure to look at?
Yeah. There's... When I say hundreds of district, they take different forms.
I realize that.
There's property-based improvement districts. Wine heritage districts currently in California, there's two, Temecula and Livermore, and...
Oh.
Yeah. And so, there's some similarities, I guess, maybe Temecula, but... And there's a few others behind them that are considering it. They're just further behind us. But those would be the examples. And in the case of Livermore, they actually just kept their vintners association in place and had them be the governing body, because people were apparently satisfied with that structure. And I apologize, I'm not certain of how Temecula did it. But I understand the question, and we'll make sure that we respond to it.
Yeah, just... I was thinking more of any ag heritage, because you're going to have big farmers and little farmers, no matter what they're growing.
Yeah, yeah.
Or the proportionality issue is kind of...
Yeah.
Maybe that we could look into ourselves, so...
Yeah. Well, we'll see what research we can do and find out.
Excuse me, Frank. Sorry.
That's okay. Yeah, but the intent of the district is to do general marketing, not necessarily specifically directed toward one particular winery or another, correct?
No, it's a greater good effort.
So, really, you know...
You're hoping that all boats will float by...
Right.
Creating awareness and traffic for the region, and also being able to have synergy with other economic development-focused nonprofits.
I think, yeah, the point is, is how important is it to have that much input when the goal is general and for the benefit of all? I mean, I'm assuming as long as you're doing that, then you're, you know, you're doing what you need to do.
Yeah. And, I mean, I think it's... The governance and the bylaws and the elections are the thing that people are very interested in, but kind of the proposal is really around, do we want to have a 1% assessment of the wineries and how those get governed? Like I said, we've done a few different straw proposals, but it's still a bit of a moving target. It's not been nailed down and ratified. And who would ratify it? The AVA? So, I mean, there's some... Still some work to be done on that.
Okay. You know, I have a question on the wine club sales.
Yeah.
What about if somebody's a winery, multiple wineries, some of the bigger wineries, and say they have one, the wine is being sold at Shenandoah Valley, but the sale's being handled through another winery or like another office? How would you capture that sale?
It's basically captured by a taxable transaction within Amador County. So, the intent would be that if you have a wine club event, and people come and they pick up their wine in the... And it's billed within Amador County, it becomes a taxable event.
That's my question, because like, you know, in the electronic world, you can bill something anywhere.
Yeah.
You can pick it up here, and they'll bill you in New York. And we had a similar deal in Greenstone, actually George Reed Quarry down in Jackson Valley. I don't think it was intentional on their part, but they're selling the rock at the quarry. That was the point of sale. And they're billing it out of either Lowdi or Clements. And for quite a while, it went on, and the sales tax went to those areas. So, could you have... I wonder if you could have the same situation going on with your...
Well, first of all, again, the sales tax data is confidential, so it's not as if our committee or the AVA or anybody else sees it other than in aggregate. So, if there are specific instances of that, it would be hard for us to tell. All we know is, it's intended to be collection under an O2 licensed winery for a taxable transaction within Amador County. And the hope from that is intentional...
That might be the county's mission to pick up on that.
Yeah. The hope is there wouldn't be leakage, because if there's leakage, it's also leakage to the county revenues.
True.
Yeah.
Thank you, John.
Yeah, thank you.
Any members of the public like to comment on this issue?
Mr. Chairman, I would... I think this is more like a public hearing, even though it's called a public here... It's called a public meeting in the statute.
Okay.
So, you would formally open the public meeting, and then you'd hear all the public comment, and then you would close the public...
Okay, well, it wasn't a notice of public hearing, but I'll do...
It's not a public... No, it's not. It's a noticed public meeting. So, it was a note... It was specifically noticed to all the...
Right. Thank you.
All we have to do is move to open the public meeting at this time.
I'm going. At this time, we'll open the public meeting. Any members of the public like to comment? And please come forward and state your name for the record, and ladies first. At least, it's that way in Amador County still.
Hi, my name is Susan Feist. I'm a resident of Sutter Creek. I have a tasting room in Drytown. I've had my winery for 12 and a half years, and my winery is in Amador City. I have an alternating proprietorship.
And also, please sign in here.
Thank you. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to speak here today and for considering this. I think it's an important idea to better fund our wineries and draw more tourism tax revenue to the county, as well to the wineries. I wanted to start... Are we on a time limit?
Pardon?
Is there a time? Are we timing?
Normally, five minutes.
Okay. I can get it under that. So, I wanted to start out with a quote from the Wine Institute website about their priorities and their strategic plan. And what I particularly stuck out to me was this one. And their goal is to promote and protect the interests of members and inform relevant audiences about the benefits of California wine with a unified voice.
I misspoke also. It's three minutes.
Okay.
But roughly.
All right. I'll be quicker. So, yeah, so, just the unified voice of promoting California wine is why I'm here today, and I think it's an important part of executing this tax and making it work for everyone. I just want to start out with the fact that I was not given notification of this ballot. I think that they were trying to... I asked the consultant at the city council meeting for Sutter Creek last week why... Because he mentioned all O2 wineries were being counted, and I mentioned I was not. I hadn't received a ballot, and he said, oh, they were trying to get them to us by certified mail. So, in just this week, I'm starting to get notifications of that ballot, which obviously I do not have, because I haven't been there to sign for it. I have had a little bit of trouble with the AVA. I was removed from the association without proper procedure notification. I went to their meeting, and there was no specific justification from the bylaws or the regulations that anyone could come up with when why I was no longer a member. And what you guys already touched on was with the representation. It doesn't seem equitable to me. The structure of the board with the categories, revenue, you know, there's obvious conflict in that. There's also a few other concerns. One is there's a statement that directors can be removed without cause. That's actually listed in there twice. So, I think there's a real danger of subjectivity, and dissent is punishable by removal from the board. Let's see. There's also a requirement for... Just to revisit like the history here, I have been a board member of the Vintners Association. I've also served on numerous committees in the last 12 years. So, there's a requirement that two directors have to be on each committee, and we often had trouble, you know, just getting one person from the board. So, I think there's some trouble with that. And I do think, as you guys already were asking, like, can we really approve this and implement it without this all being dialed in and the details being recorded and it being done? And again, I am behind it, and I just think we need to do it well. It feels a little reminiscent of the school consolidation. Needs to be done. Great idea, but let's do it right. There was a question at the Sutter Creek City Council member meeting from one of my other council members, and the consultant did state one of the concerns from the association is management. And I think there's a red flag in this document that despite I've updated my address with the vintners, they're still showing me in Sutter Creek, and I've been in Drytown for almost three years. So, just a little detail. There's also reverence, a reference to a governance committee, which is not defined, and it states if created. So, there's some ambiguity with that. That committee is, I think... Unfortunately, I just was notified. I hadn't received this, so I haven't completely digested all this. But it looks to me like that committee is able to determine the board nominations. Also, waives a quorum, which I thought was a strange specificity. And then getting to the funding, which is, it'd be great to have more revenue for the wineries here. But there's a little bit of conflict in the... First, let's see. Just in the cost overview, and I won't read it out of respect for your time, but there's just two things. Sales made outside of the state of California are not subject to assessment due to lack of benefit. And then it says, assessment dollars may be spent outside of California. So, there's a real conflict in that, and it's... You know, I don't have national distribution. Some of us do. It's a wonderful thing to get us on the national stage. But there's conflict in where is this money going to be spent? Is it not, or is it... Or will it be spent out of state? And I do think it's great to get us on the national stage. There is a lack of detail in the budget as well, and it's really concentrating power to the board. And I would like to see a better plan to see how these funds will be utilized and not have it be so general. And then there's another part that seems to be in conflict with the Brown Act. There's an item that says there's action by written consent, that they can do things without an open meeting and by writing. And again, I didn't spend a lot of time on that, but that seems like something that really should be looked into. Feels like to me a little bit what we're doing, especially since I wasn't noticed of it, and I've had trouble with the vintners lately.
What do you mean you weren't noticed of it?
No, I wasn't.
From the vintners?
Yeah. I never received anything. But I am listed on the list. I do think they've been trying to get me a certified letter, but this week... And I asked the consultant at the city council meeting last week, because I didn't realize that I should have been. So, it feels a little bit like the Boston Tea Party, no taxation without representation. And I like to be represented. I'm a small winery. There's actually specificity in this plan that any winery without a revenue of more than $60,000 a year won't be counted at all. There's a growing trend to have very small wineries. Even the state fair is acknowledging them as micro wineries. So, I just think we need to make sure the plan is dialed in.
Wrap it up pretty quick.
Yeah. I'm all done. Yeah. So, thank you for your time. And I just, since you all have the oversight, and this will be a tax, and hopefully, we will generate more tax, sales tax with this for the long term, but let's just do it right.
Can you clarify one thing you said? I'm not sure if you were for it or against it, but assessment dollars may be spent out of Califor... outside of California. But then you said you'd like some kind of a national presence. So, do you agree with that or not agree?
Well, I think it's worthwhile spending tax dollars out of state, but because we're concentrating the power with the large wineries with distribution, there is a danger of them then being able to use this tax revenue to promote their national sales that won't benefit people actually coming to the county. You know, they'll help sell their wine in Wisconsin, but it won't bring people from Wisconsin to Amador. So, there's a give and take. And again, you know, it'd be nice, even, you know, maybe someone in Milwaukee drinks a bottle of Terrador or wine, and then they think, oh, let's go to Amador. But there's a risk that instead, you know, it's just going to sell the wine in the liquor stores in Wisconsin. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Morse? Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I'm Robert Morse, Morse Wines, Fiddletown, California. I... Hopefully, you've all received the letter I sent you. I apologize for its length, but most of all, I have to apologize for what is, unfortunately, I've been here 21 years plus, to bring you guys into what is essentially a family squabble, pure and simple. And we are now trying to put the cart before the horse, as you stated. After two years, this has been in fruition. It... A lot of us didn't think it was going to go, because it was so ridiculously written. None of us have a problem with the fact that we need to increase our marketing. We'd like to see more people. We have a lot of wineries here, not many restaurants, not many hotels. So, we're winery-heavy, as you guys probably well aware of. And we do need to market that. We do need to market it to San Francisco Bay Area, through Reno, up in north, south of here. We don't necessarily need to market other places. That doesn't mean it wouldn't be good. What John pointed out early was all correct. Two years ago, that was a great model. The problem is, in something as complicated as this, we are trying to turn a simple lever into essentially the worst-looking Rube Goldberg device I've ever seen. So, I'm going to go through what I think is germane from the thing I sent you guys. First of all, it's on the assessment. That was my biggest concern, is even in within the website right now, the material that was on your board agenda today, as I sent some examples, it states different ways that the assessment's going to be done. We don't know which one it is. Is it the one that makes a very small winery look the same almost as a large winery? If we're trying to bring people here, and one winery crushes 200,000 tons, and one winery crushes four tons, shouldn't there be maybe a graduated scale that is... That that assessment's based on? Lowdi, somebody mentioned, could we pick somebody else? How about weight over scale? How much wine do you produce here? We all turn in an annual report. It goes to the federal government, state government. It says, how many tons did I crush? And they go, okay. Jeez, we want to raise $200,000 for our budget? If we had 200,000 tons, how's a dollar a ton sound, wineries? Okay, that seems fair. Then, I can go into detail on where this goes. But this has been fought. It's been fought for the last 21 years I've been by the large wineries. The large wineries want to pay the same amount as the small wineries. And yet, they state in their goals, we want federal visibility, excuse me, national visibility. They want television. They want all these things. And if you read, by the way, which I just got yesterday, because it was somewhere in somebody's desk drawer, the Articles of Governance, the board gets elected once. After that, and the board can eliminate, as Susan mentioned, whoever they want without cause. So, if the three large wineries and one middle guy that they threaten or whatever say, hey, you want to be with us? Great. Can eliminate everybody else. After that, the law is as stated. It is a draft, and this is the problem. It's a draft. Want wineries and you guys to approve something, which is the cart before the horse. They said, we want this thing. Then we'll go off and decide it. The problem is, when you look at their draft of their Articles of Governance, it says that after those first seven board members are done, the board members approve all subsequent board members. This is the Politburo. This is the Politburo. This isn't voting. There is nothing in the Pages of Governance that mention anything about listening to or getting the vote of the member wineries. Not a word. It is all about how we can control the board, assign new board members by ourselves without any vote or support. It's ridiculous. It's essentially a perpetual motion machine by the people who get control. This is a grab. And it's a power grab where now we have lawyers and consultants, as you heard. We didn't have lawyers and consultants before, and I'm not sure a little nonprofit organization of a bunch of small wineries needs lawyers and consultants to tell us where to go and how to do our business so that we can pay them and then pay somebody else to get fees when the simplest levers are out there, available to every organization. So outside of the assessment system, which is, I don't know what it is. Some of it says it's all retail, including restaurants, wine club shipments, everything. Sell hats, it's in there, everything. Somebody goes, comes up from LA, visits the winery tasting room and says, "I can't bring it on the plane with me. Ship me some cases of wine down to Los Angeles." Is that in there or not? If they call back later because they joined the wine club to get discount and they call back and say, "Can you send me some more wine? It was great, we drank it." Is that in there? No, it's not. Some wineries are 80 to 95% distribution. Those are the huge trucks running up and down the roads of Amador County. One of those wineries alone crushes more than the bottom 20 wineries on the list. But all their wine goes out through distribution. That's not included, which is why fairness, based on how much do you produce in our county with our grapes, or if you buy grapes from everybody else, great, heaven forbid, but you might do that. So why not build it on that? But no, that didn't sound fair to the people that are launching this initiative. They wanted that not included. Now, I am not against national. I'm not against state. I'm not against any of this stuff. But this money should be spent proportional. If giant wineries, X, Y, and Z's, amount that they contribute over the mean of all the wineries that contribute want to be allocated to national programs, I think that's fair. That's great. They should run that part of the committee that does national marketing. Super. I don't think anybody'd be against that. But no, we don't want that because they don't want to have to pay that. They want this one assessment fee on a very small portion of their revenue. And it's not fair to the small guys. It just isn't. Last, or another thing, on the governance. You said, "Oh, we had to do a five-year thing." No, they could have done a one-year thing. Could have done a two, three, four, five. Five is the maximum that you can start up with a new organization. They chose the maximum right off the bat. The governance rules, as Susan mentioned, I've mentioned, are insane. So starting some says, "You're locked in for five years." Now, I don't know where John's passion is because John's winery's up for sale right now, so I don't know why he wants to leave an area that this wonderful new program's going to come into place and make us fantastic. But for those of us who are really trying to stay here, this is a killer. I think a lot of people are just out of business. And by the way, I could work around all this laws that they put in there. I could open another business. I could sell it through there. All these things are possible. Now, is it worth the 1% to do that? No, it's a matter of point of fairness. This is something that's being launched by consulting firms and lawyers bought in by our larger wineries because it stopped them from ever having to pay a proportionate amount of fees. And all the things I sent you support that. All their documentation, most of it, says it's all about local. It's all about bringing people here. No, it's not. It sounds good, but that's not what it's about.
Wrap it up pretty quick, Robert.
Okay. I'm just, oh, and by the way, you should all get a copy, if you can, of the governance bylaws because they're out there in draft form. I think we need to have this nailed down. It needs to be, if this gets organized, this is the way it's going to be structured. It needs to include the votes and support of the wineries. They say they have the support. I'll let the room speak for itself. I don't believe they have the support for this at all. I'm certainly vehemently against it. Thank you, gentlemen, for your time. Sorry to send you such a long email as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The lady's next.
Good morning, gentlemen. I'm here as a senior citizen on fixed income, trying to understand a complex situation where I believe there are some questions that still need to be clarified before we can jump into becoming the private accounting and banking system to fund advertising for private businesses in the county. May I remind you, we're in a budget deficit and sometimes Mr. Budget, who may like to do something if makes you feel good, but you have to say no.
Sherry, just to lay your fears, if this, if this does go forward, the counties, I think the board's made it pretty clear so far, we're not looking to put county dollars to administration of this.
How much time has the county spent in making and creating an ordinance for an assessment? My question is, who, how does this assessment get enforced? Is the county going to be the enforcer? Are you going to be able to collect after three years in normal assessment procedures to take the property like you do in a property tax, which is five years, where you can confiscate the property? Who then would confiscate the property?
That's a fair question.
If this is an actual assessment? Where does it go? Back to a governing board that they don't even have put together yet?
So there's no mechanism like that for a sales tax-based assessment? That's only for property. That doesn't happen? And the county would not enforce it. It would be the entity that they contract with to do the billing and collection that if there's a delinquency, that entity would do the collection as well?
Unfortunately, I see a system here who is trying to get the county involved, time staff, which is the cost taken, an amount of monies taken away from other true public purposes. I enjoy wine. I enjoy our wineries. I do not understand why a private association cannot do all of this on their own. I belong to a private association and we have to keep our own accounting. We have to send the monies, bills to private people. We have to keep track of who pays and who doesn't. And it's for a public purpose, really. It's for roads. So at this point, all I can see is that you're trying to blend some power of the government to promote private enterprise. And the private association can do all of this, their own enforcement measures, they can go to small claims court, file liens, but they all should agree before we even think of adopting this. And I believe our public monies and purposes are not to provide money to private businesses or for their benefit. Trickle-down economics does not work. We can see that by the fact we don't have enough money for our roads. We spend over $200,000 a year helping to pay from the county budget to Chamber of Commerce, Council on Tourism, all to promote Amador County and...
About over 200, but it's close.
It's close, okay. It's almost, or it's almost over it. The private profits leaving many cause the public to assume the risk or liabilities of their private ventures. Now, that statement was based on the property-based assessments. I'm not sure about a sales tax or sales assessment. This is very confusing for the public. And there's a big difference between adopting an ordinance, Jeff, versus a resolution. You're doing two things here. And so I think it is not wise that they can do all this on their own without involving the government, simply by raising the price on a bottle of wine and pay their advertisements for it. We don't need to become a monkey see, monkey do, keep up at the Joneses attitude. It's not a wise situation for the public to get blurred lines between private enterprise and the public monies. We elected you guys to take care of and be fiduciary trustees of our private monies, not to be giving time, energy of the county employees over to promote the benefits for private wineries. I'm sorry, but it's a direct mixture of business and private enterprise and it shouldn't happen. So I'm asking on behalf of Amador County taxpayers that you get all the information before we even try to start the process. Because I understand it, when you adopt an ordinance, now, the second ordinance puts it into the legal ramifications of being adopted, the second reading. And to have a public hearing just before you do that doesn't give the public, let alone you guys, enough chance to understand all the ramifications. So I thank you for trying to find out and not providing a blank check from our taxpayer.
That's good, Sherry, it's enough.
I know. But they've had two years here and all of a sudden it's brought upon us, Brian. And we're just trying to...
It's enough, Sherry. We heard you, you're done. Please, just on this...
Now, okay, I'm coming back because I had a request from Gary Darrell because of purposes that his health will not allow him to come speak. Asked me to put this into the public record. Questions and observations to the Amador County Wine Growers' proposed ordinance. Are hobby wine growers being forced to join the district? Are all wine growers in accord with this proposal? Why is the government of Amador County getting involved with private enterprise? Why can't the Amador Vintners Association manage their own association dues and advertising? What is meant by the event of a legal challenge against the association? Any and all assessment funds may be used for the cost of defending their district association. Is there already an expectation of litigation? Isn't government involved contrary to free enterprise? Why county employees have the time to handle the winery association's financial issues? Or is the county going to hire a person for this activity? Instead of using and hiring the county as the ACWHO, is the Amador County Vintners Association enforcer, why doesn't the AVA hire an accounting firm or billing firm? And that was put in by another taxpayer, property taxpayer up in Pioneer. So I thank you for your time, but I don't think you all understand it completely. I know one doesn't. But this is not the time to adopt an ordinance when all the questions haven't been answered. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
I got a fellow in front here. Wait.
Good morning. My name is Lorenzo Muslia and I'm partner at Andis Wines.
What was your name again?
Lorenzo. Forget about the last name. It's very complicated.
Okay, Lorenzo.
Partner at Andis Wines and as well National Sales Manager for Andis Wines and as well member of our current AVA, Amador County Vintners Association. I spend most of my time selling wine and distribution and I spend about a third of my time away from my family trying to bring revenue to Andis Wines and to, to keep our business going on. I would love to spend less time there and more time in our, in our county and more time in my home. The reason why we seek distribution, like Mr. Morse said, that we are sending all these wines outside, is because we don't have enough revenue generated by our tasting rooms. When the AVA goal is to bring more awareness to our county, but there's no money, so we are obligated to create some events, then most of our members are contradictory to those events. So we created another way that we can bring more money and it's not a tax, it's an assessment. It's something that we are simply collecting by visitors. The more we bring, the more we will have budget to spend on marketing so we can bring more money. I just want to remind that all the wineries that do distribution, that a few of them are here, we are the first ambassadors, that we have done it on our own money. And we just remind that selling wines and distribution, it's sold at a third of the cost that we currently sell it in our tasting room. Because that's how the three-tier system works. I would love to sell it at the full price, but again, we're not having that much traffic in our county. So all this contradictory that are going and that, oh, we're trying to tax people, we're not trying, we're trying to get money or we're trying to steal your time for, for doing this, it's just, it's not, it's not 100% true. So our number one goal is simply to bring more awareness. And the way we do it, it's the most democratic way. We all visit resorts. I'm sure every single one of us has visited hotels. And when you read the bill at the end of the day, you see all those assessment fees that go back to promote you, to reach again to you so you can visit them back. So it's the same thing that we're trying to do. We're taking the money from the visitors and we're spending in our behalf for our county so we can make this region a little bit more popular and we don't disappear. We all see wineries that are for sale, yes, but have we ever asked them why they're for sale? Because it's been very difficult to do business in Amador County without all this traffic that is not, that is not floating in anymore. So please allow us to survive. I mean, I'm a, our winery is a medium, medium-sized winery. There are a few wineries above us, there are a few wineries below us in terms of size. All our sales are based on what we bring to our tasting room. And if some wineries bring less, their contribution is going to be less. If some wineries are bringing more, their contribution is going to be more. And the board that will be, that will be built together, it will be a representation of all these members that wants to join this board. But currently, we struggle even to maintain our own board and we go around, in our current board, there are seven members and all from medium-sized wineries. So why the big wineries don't come more often now that we're trying to do something that is so important? Everybody is bringing up all this negativity. So I don't see it as a negativity. I only, I only see it as maybe fear of competition, maybe not. But again, I just want to remind that the AVA currently does the same thing with less money. The new thing that is going to be built is going to have more money to do exactly the same thing. So if they are in contradiction to what we're creating, then probably they are contradictory with what we have. Because the AVA's goal is to generate more income and to create more advertisement opportunities and more marketing dollars to be spent on behalf for our region. Thank you.
Lorenzo, a couple of questions. So you mentioned distribution. Do you, do you sell outside the county a lot that way? I mean, is that...
The three-tier system works that we sell it freight onboard, it goes to a, and we pay excise taxes to whatever state because... pay excise taxes to whatever state because we sell the wine, and then the wine gets sold to North Carolina, and the North Carolina sells it to their own peers.
Okay, so yeah, I understand that, I just wanted to know, but not all wineries distribute like that?
Correct.
Smaller wineries probably really rely on tasting room sales, direct sales. So I guess there's a real question is how the marketing money is going to be spent to attract people to their tasting rooms versus maybe a more national or statewide outreach to distribute wines further? And so there's, you know, different benefits from different people, and maybe that's not being spelled out very clear. I mean, that wasn't probably, I didn't necessarily glean all that until just now through these conversations, but another thing is, it sounds like you're in favor of something like this?
Absolutely. We need, the money is not going to be spent to benefit any winery, national distributions. The money is going to be spent on benefiting the visitation towards Amador County.
So that's strictly in the...
Mark, it's on the, we're going to spend money on marketing.
It's in the plan itself, so to attract to point of sale, you know, tasting room sales.
Bring visitation to, those like its domino effects, the more visitation we bring, the more people, if we are able to move people from Reno, from Washington, from Oregon, from Arizona, Colorado, come and visit us, when they will go home, they will have the choice to purchase our wine online.
That's very clear, that that's how it's going to be spent in the document?
We'll make it clear that we understand it's a marketing.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, just as a comment, could you tell us if you're for or against from the get-go?
Either at the front or the end, one or the other.
Okay, my name is Mark Gamash, I'm from Slow to 20 Winery, I'm against this process. We're one of the smallest wineries in the county, we're not in the Vintners Association, we're initially deemed not eligible to be in the association because of restrictions placed on us through the conditional use permit process in the county. Most of the customers that we get at our winery come to us because we are small, because we're not Napa, because it's totally different feel, because our wine's not $150 to $300 a bottle. And we actually have wine club members that live in Napa and joined our wine club because they say that Amador County is the way Napa used to be 30 or 40 years ago. So we're known under a different reputation, which I think is good, and that's why people come here. They don't want to come to a giant Napa-style winery that's snooty and charges a lot of money. My biggest concern with this is the assumption behind the whole thing by the Vintners Association is that they have not done a good job at marketing over the last several years. If they're an entrepreneurial organization of small businesses, they have every incentive to do their own marketing and to do a good job of it. That's part of doing business. Maybe there's a bigger picture going on here. Maybe the entire wine industry in the US and in the world is depressed for a lot of reasons. Maybe boomers like us that like wine and used to spend a lot of money on wine are aging out and are on fixed incomes and have less money to spend on wine. Maybe the younger generation doesn't prefer wine, maybe they prefer beer or cannabis, or maybe they just think alcohol in general is unhealthy, so they spend less money on alcohol and wine. Maybe our economy's been in a doldrum for the last three years with inflation. People don't have as much money to spend on discretionary luxuries like wine. These are all huge macro factors way above the control of the Vintners Association or the county, and they have a much bigger influence on the wine industry in general and wine in our area than anything the Vintners Association can do with marketing or the county can do with taxes. The fact that the Vintners Association is trying to align themselves with the county to collect a tax means they know they're in a weak position. They need a big brother to be the enforcer, as someone said earlier. My other concern is, what is this going to lead to and what precedence does it set? How are you going to monitor and enforce this? Are you going to audit our books? Are you going to make sure everyone's using the same accounting methods to separate the direct-to-consumer versus not? I think you already admitted you have no way to do that. But I can tell you, in our accounting and probably most other winery's accounting, we don't separate direct-to-consumer versus non-direct in our books. So how would we do that? How do we know everyone else is going to do it the same way? Wine clubs in particular are of interest to me. If a large Napa-based winery is billing all of its wine club sales out of Napa County, even though a significant amount of those sales are to people in Amador County and our Amador wines and Amador fruit, why are they not going to have to pay the tax on that, those huge revenues? It's not fair to the smaller wineries that only sell and bill within the county. So I'm concerned about the unfairness. The other thing is, this tax is only going to be collected from the wineries, but it's going to benefit all the supporting infrastructure, hotels, RV parks, restaurants, grocery stores, gas stations, all of those businesses, retail shops, all of those businesses in the county would benefit from marketing of wineries. Why aren't they being required to pay the same tax to benefit tourism to Amador County? And is there already an Amador tourism tax? If there is, is any of that being spent on winery marketing?
Well, it's TOT, transient occupancy tax, so that's on hotels.
Okay, so there's nothing then being spent on marketing wineries by the county?
Well, I think...
That goes to marketing in the region.
I would agree that, Mark. I think Amador Council of Tourism does market Amador County, and a big part of that is wineries, and I think...
But is that using tax dollars?
Pardon?
Is that using tax dollars?
Transient occupancy tax, which people pay for like a room tax. I want to say almost 50% that goes to either the chamber or Amador Council of Tourism.
You get my point. Restaurants, gas stations, grocery stores, they all benefit as much or more than the wineries do when tourism comes to the county. So I have submitted a letter, it's long, there's a lot of other points in there, a lot of other people have brought up those points. I think, as you can tell from this hearing, that just the thought of creating this heritage district is creating a lot of dissension amongst the wine community. And I think that's as bad or worse than any lack of marketing. It's making wineries feel like they're not working together. One of the things that first impressed us when we came to the county was other wineries helped us, everybody worked together, there was a spirit of camaraderie. I see this process as destroying that.
You know, I think so far it kind of appears to be the case, but I'm not saying this winery heritage district's a bad thing, but I think maybe, maybe needs to be a little bit more filtering out and discussion on it, that's kind of how it appears a little bit.
Yeah, I think the key issues are big winery versus small winery, national versus, you know, national advertising, I'm not sure we really need that. It almost seems backwards, it's like we're taxing the people that are already here in the county buying wine. They're already here, why do we need, they don't need to know we're here because they're already here. We're not taxing the people that aren't here.
Well, I think...
And that we want to make aware of the county.
Part of what's going on, I...
We're taxing the wrong side of the equation.
I think a lot of businesses are struggling, and they're trying to find a vehicle to maybe bring some more comments.
Well, that was my point, there's macro economic factors going on way beyond the Vintners Association, the county, or any marketing efforts. So I think a key thing is to define that direct-to-consumer, address specifically wine club issues.
Then kind of go ahead and wrap it up here.
Yeah, and I'll wrap it up with a quote from my favorite governor from California, Ronald Reagan. The nine most terrifying words in the English language are, "I'm from the government and I'm here to help."
And I loved your list of taxes and fees.
Oh, yeah, I didn't mention that. I did include, as an attachment to my letter, all the taxes and fees and licenses I could think of in five minutes that are applied to wineries, and I got to 19 before my five minutes were up. So to me, it's almost a miracle that any small business can make a profit in California right now, and as everybody knows, lots of them are moving out because it's such a challenge.
Thank you.
I think he was next back here. You're up.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Holger Hornisch, former resident of Livermore, where I spent four years on the Board of Directors for that AVA. And during my time there, we did form the WHD and push through the 2% assessment fee that we elected there. It doesn't go without saying that there was pushback, room for clarification, and one thing that I keep hearing is that, you know, why don't we all advertise for ourselves and market ourselves? And to that I say we do. I am currently employed at a small winery in Plymouth called Range Victoria Vineyard, and we produce roughly 3,000 cases of wine a year. And so my marketing budget is tiny compared to some of these bigger wineries, obviously. So by banding together, that would make a whole lot of sense, but it's hard to get people to come together, to form an alliance, if you will, and to get bigger advertising dollars out there, to be able to put money behind publications like Wine Spectator, for example, who are insanely expensive. I currently, with my budget now, need to be very wise about my spending, Facebook, social media channels, print publications out of the question, so on and so forth. So during my time in Livermore, once the 2% assessment had passed, we were then able to collectively form different groups of people. We had a marketing and advertising group, and it was elective, I mean, anybody can join and give feedback, and we had 35% of our income aligned towards just that purpose. But amongst other things, we were also able to have a full-time enologist on staff for education, any winery that wanted help with, hey, what's wrong, what's not working with my wine, can you tell me, so on and so forth. So we put up three billboards throughout San Jose, saw a large increase in traffic to the area. My favorite thing is just word of mouth after that, we had so much out-of-town presence coming to even us smaller winery, it was amazing. So suffice to say it all that an assessment, nobody's ever going to be a fan of it, but it really, really helped us have a web redesign, we were able to hire a company to help us with the marketing and being very strategic of how do these dollars get spent to bring more traffic to the area. So are we, you know, the whole horse and car thing has been mentioned a couple of times, and I do agree that there should be more clear and concise messaging there, but as a whole, I am for this 1% assessment myself.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I think this time we'll take that Zoom comment, Heather.
Thank you, Ms. O'Reardon, go ahead when ready.
Hi, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Yes.
Great, thanks. Thanks for, this is Jane O'Reardon, thanks for letting me speak via Zoom. I own Terre Rouge and Easton Wines, I have for 30 years now in Amador County with my husband, Bill Easton. And yeah, I want to say right off, I'm still on the fence about this particular proposal, which I guess is a no vote at this point currently. It's not about the money. I am totally fine with spending more money, I've been on the Vintners Board many, many years in the past and on committees and everything, and I'm all for marketing. We sell our wine nationally, and we sell a lot direct to consumer, and that has increased over the last 10 years a lot, which is great. The things that we've talked about today, some of the objections, and I'm just going to pinpoint for you the things that I think need to be worked out before anybody votes on this. One is governance, which has been talked about repeatedly, how the board is made up, how the votes are handled, a lot of things about the governance, which, there's only one document that I've seen with something last fall, which was a draft of the government, and I don't believe it's in the packet that you have for this meeting. So I think all those details need to be brought forward so that we're more clear about what it is that we're joining. And on that topic, I want to point out that it's not like joining the Wine Institute or ZAP, which is the Zimpandell Group, because at any time you join a wine organization, you can choose to leave if you don't like the way that things are being done, or you don't think that your money is being spent for marketing that you would like to spend it on, you can get out of that group. But becoming, once this is assessed for five years, every winery in this district is stuck with this group, this board, this governance. So we better be sure that we know what we're doing and that it's organized in a way that we all understand. How the money will be spent is another big issue. I know Holger touched on the Livermore Wine Heritage District, and when we looked at that, I think two years ago, we were first looking at proposals for forming one in Amador County, it was very spelled out. What percentage was being spent on marketing, what percentage on education, what percentage on this? We have seen nothing, I have seen nothing that really spells it out, there's just kind of a big list of things that we would like to spend money on, but there's no specifics. Another thing that needs to be pointed out is that...
You know, just, one question, Jane, this is Supervisor Renetto. They have an initial assessment budget, I guess maybe there's no real specifics in it, but it does kind of lay out generally what they're looking to do. I don't know if you'd seen that or not?
Yes, it lists, I think it just lists things that they want to do, but it doesn't really say what percentage or, I don't think maybe it's specific enough.
Okay. I just didn't know you'd seen that or not.
I would like to see it more specific. The other thing to point out is that the public is going to be paying for this. I hope you guys understand that. The winery is the one being assessed, but the winery has the option, they don't have to, to pass it on to their customers. So anyone walking in the door of our tasting room is going to pay 1%, as long as it's listed on the bill, you can charge the customer 1%. I'm personally not going to do that because I don't really like that. I don't want my customers to be paying for something that I feel my winery should be paying for, for marketing for our region. So I'm going to be just absorbing that money and paying it, I'm not passing it on to the customer, but I would imagine that most wineries in the county are going to pass it on to the customer. The main thing that I have been really upset about is that all along in this process, for the last year and a half, two years, it was always mentioned that there was going to be a vote, that we were going to get a chance ultimately, in the end, to vote, and it was going to be a weighted vote, apparently, according to the size of the percentage of the assessment that your winery is going to pay. But I've heard very conflicting things in the last few weeks. What was sent to us in the mail was kind of a rinky-dink, I took it as a way to see which way the wind was blowing. It was a petition, basically, you could say yes or no or undecided. It did not come certified mail, it was a piece of mail from the county or from the vendors, I don't remember, I assume it went to everyone in the county, and I almost threw it in the garbage because I didn't look important to me. I'm sure other people didn't see it, didn't respond to it, it didn't look like any kind of official vote. I assumed that there was going to be an official vote somewhere here coming up soon, but I still don't think that there is. I keep hearing conflicting things about whether each winery is really going to have a say in whether this goes forward or not. Can you answer that to me today? Is there going to be an official, by mail, certified vote to all the wineries in the county, yes or no?
You know, I think maybe, Greg, are you going to answer that?
I can jump in, but maybe...
John might want to answer that.
Might want to answer as well, because there was some other ballot that they sent out, but this process to create the district does not involve a ballot. It was based on a weighted petition that had to have over 50% that came to the board. The board adopted a resolution to start this process, we're here at the public meeting, there will be a public hearing in May, and the board, the county has the ability to Um, and the board, the county has the ability to create it unless there is a majority, 50% or more, of protests turned into the clerk of the board. So that's the process for creating... So I don't know, I don't know about the ballot that was sent to you. I think that could be cleared up by someone else.
Uh, Mr. Sashia, would you...
It was not really a ballot.
I think maybe, uh, John can maybe hopefully bring us a little bit of clarity to that.
Yeah, so that council's correct around the petition. That, that was the, the, the formal process was expression of, um, support or not. But then, secondly, because the formation of this type of a, a sales tax-based assessment district does not require a formal vote, the county does not have to undertake a formal vote. We opted to, um, send out a ballot by certified mail, and, you know, I, it may have been deemed to be rinky-dink, but we, we, uh, modeled it after the ballots that are used for property-based improvement districts, use the same format. It's not intended to be binding, because we don't have authority to make it binding on the members, but we wanted to provide it as an additional record to the county to help inform your decision so you could, again, have a, a sense of how many people responded, who were in favor, who were opposed. And it was just a, another way to, uh, inform your decision-making process. But there's no additional ballot that's required or planned at this point.
Okay. Thank you, Sean.
That was not, there was not a certified mail that came to my winery. I don't know if other people got one. It was just a letter.
Yeah, I don't think legally it has to be certified, Jane, but it may not have been a bad step, but not necessary, I don't believe.
Well, I, I, my point is just that I don't, I thought there was going to be some other official vote, and it doesn't sound like there is. And so I kind of don't feel like I have a voice. I think the board has been going around and talking to people and getting people to sign this petition. And, you know, they haven't talked to me. They probably know how I feel, but I'm, I would, I'll, I'll end now, but I just wanted to point out that there are two really important things going forward for the Board of Supervisors, is to really nail down how this district would be organized and governed, and I'm not opposed to something like this. I just want to know before we jump into it, how it's going to be governed, who's going to be on the board, what their control is going to be, and how the money is going to be spent. Those are the number one and two things.
Okay, um, you might have a little more clarity here for you. Would you, would you like to address this possibly?
Hello, my name is Megan Van Hook. I'm the Acting Executive Director for the Amador Ventners Association. I was the one that sent the certified ballots to all O2 wineries in Amador County.
What do you mean by certified ballots?
Uh, certified mail. I s, I sent out ballots via certified mail.
Okay, so you did then?
I did. Um, waiting for my assistant, she's going to send me a copy of Terra Rouge's to see if, uh, what address it went to, and I can provide you a copy once I receive the text message.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you. I have a copy of it. May I go grab it?
Oh, what, what was the intent?
Uh, to see if the wineries was, uh, would vote yes or no for the Wine Heritage District. Yeah, it was yes or no. We mailed them on March 6th.
Okay.
And I did send Susan Feis an email on March 4th, asking her what address that I could send it to, and I did not receive a response.
I have a question from Megan, if I may?
Yes.
Megan, is this the same ballot that I turned into the Ventner's office in the ballot box? Because I did vote, but that was not a certified letter that I received.
Uh, Jane, is your mailing address P.O. Box 401, Fiddletown, California, Terra Rouge, Eastern Wines?
Correct, and that's, I did receive this, what they're calling this petition ballot. It did not come certified. And I took it as just basically seeing which way the wind was blowing, not as an official ballot. I guess I misinterpreted it.
Okay.
Thanks for letting me speak.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so yeah, you're, I mean, I, what I'm looking at here seems pretty clear-cut.
You have a copy.
What it's about, I mean. I mean, the ballot looks pretty fair to me. Yeah. And I mean, it's, it's something that's kind of, um, it's, I'd say this thing's languished for quite a while. And there's been some controversy, I think, also now it's probably moving maybe fairly fast. Um, I think probably trying to get that end result, a yea or nay. And some, some things you'll see that governmental decision stuff will sit out there, and it just kind of smolders and, let's say, you go out there and you look, say, well, let's, let's, let's get this thing, let's, let's look at this. And all of a sudden, the fire blows up and everybody's, um, here where they, here where we probably should have been quite a long time ago, but, so we're trying to sort it out, get public input. Yeah, I'll, I'll get to it in a second. And so I'm glad to see you're all here, at least we're going to get the input, um, try to come to just a fair decision, so, um, the lady in back, John?
I didn't know if you saw her.
No, I didn't.
Hi, I'm Jane Marcholino, and I own and operate Deionde Vineyards and Winery in Fiddletown.
Are you speaking to the microphone, please?
In Fiddle, in Fiddletown. And I oppose this project. Uh, the goal appears to be well-intended, while I have some concerns as this program seems to have multiple ominous issues. Uh, as an owner of a boutique tasting room and winery, I oppose additional bureaucracy. I, I just don't need another bureaucracy in my pocketbook. And/or stand-up of the Heritage District for these reasons. I'm just going to go over them real quick. The cost of fully implementation of this new organization with lack of structure appears to me very excessive. The AVA membership fees during the conversion period are not clear or waived. Uh, the less complicated and expensive options for marketing strategies have not been fully explored or investigated. Options to increase the AVA annual dues had been solicited to promote methods of, for marketing strategies, while the executives decided for its members to go this route instead. I'm not clear as to what constitutes sales. Is it based on all sales, including services and farming? Or, or just specific things that involve the tasting room? In regards to the executive administrative branch, it appears continuum of the same executive operation, but under a different guise. Uh, trustee roles, uh, delegation and decision-making authority needs to be clarified to prohibit collusion, special interest dictatorship, enforcing all OT, all O2 licensees to participate. I, I see that this is just something that's going to further all OT holder, O2 holders be forced to be participant into this process, and I don't think that is fair. Member voting rights, the method, uh, has some questions. And, uh, it would, it would be best to ensure that special interest agendas and executive control are definitely re-reviewed. All implementation changes need to include member consensus as governing body, bodies currently, uh, seem to have more control, and members do not have equal weight for the approval. And full disclosure and transparency needs to be, um, provided. Allocation of assessments, fair share is questionable. And the need, uh, to validate on how funds will be directed and by whom. Spending, uh, who decides the authorize and authorizes the expenditures, such as dollar limits, requirements, regulatory restrictions, and other factors are way too vague. Complaints, who, who do you go to? Because currently, if you, if you discuss a complaint, it's either poo-pooed or put to the back. Um, a county or enti, or the entity, the new entity appointees. What are their positions? What's their description? What are their roles? Or what will they be assigned? Pay schedules, benefits, and what authorities will they be granted? Um, collection of this assessment, a structure is incomplete and vague, such as reporting purposes. There are no clear processing procedures, correct, creations of forms, instructions, calculation of tax, uh, or, or payment of the assessment. How will these reports be processed? I'm not supportive of another, again, of, of another bureaucracy to be enforced upon me. Collection procedures, who's doing the accounting, the fees, the penalties, the interest? How about guidelines for adjustments? Litigation arbitration enforcement, such as levies? Are we going to be levied upon by a, an, an, a third-party entity? Um, in all, the AVA is a solid organization, and with some flexibilities in validating a simple method to increase dues can achieve marketing goals with a greatly reduced cost in operation. This new program appears to be extremely convoluted, vague, expensive, and clearly imposes longstanding financial burdens, leaving desired goals not to be achieved due to administrative cost. Additionally, costs and enforcing participation will definitely separate small wineries to the point of extinction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors, Chairman Onetto. Nice to see you guys again. It's been too long. Uh, my name is Kathleen Mahan. I am for the assessment for the Heritage Wine District. I'm with Hellwig Winery. I'm also the current Board President for Amador Council of Tourism. And I was previously Board President a few years back of the Ventners Association. So one of the things, though I don't agree with every statement, I agree with everyone's passion. And I think that if we can pool that passion to be forthright and to what's going to really help raise all tides, um, I think that's the direction that should be taken and the viewpoint from other wineries. Uh, secondly, I feel like there's a lot of misinformation being, um, discussed today. And so, uh, hopefully, over the next course of this, to our next meeting, there can be some clarity, and I really urge, um, anybody to sit down, make an appointment, and speak to Megan, myself, John, anyone else on the Ventner Board to kind of really have their questions answered. Uh, if you look into the packet, page 10, um, under, uh, specific benefits, it does talk about, you know, marketing. Marketing is a specific benefit of this. Um, so it's not to promote wine sales in, you know, out of state. It's to promote business to Amador County. And, you know, currently, as was mentioned before by Lorenzo, it's kind of been a contingent with doing events. Some wineries love events, some wineries don't love events. Having this assessment, which is like, say you're selling a $46 bottle of wine, a 46-cent fee that's passed on to the consumer, so did you choose, is going to enable us to be self-sufficient. And the board structure is something that will be very clearly lined out. So there's a pie chart, um, on there that's showing like 66% of mark, you know, of the fees that come in. It's estimated about 346,000, um, would go strictly to marketing. There's, then there's administrative fee, and then there's overhead fees. So at our last meeting, we talked about, you know, concerns of who's collecting all of this. Um, so, you know, the Ventners would hire HDL, which is an outside company that would be doing all of the legwork, all of the collection, and any cost that would be due adhered to the county, which I think they worked in 3%, would go back. So the county is not going to be, um, upside down or losing any money by assisting us in the collection of this district.
I will say, 3% seems really low to me.
Well, and we had talked about that last time, to where we would see what that number is after working with HDL. I know as part of the, um, Visit Amador, we're also, um, doing something very similar with our 200 marketing district. Um, and having both of, both the, um, excuse me, the Ventners Association and Visit Amador on a playing field allows Amador County to benefit. Um, and yes, gas stations, businesses can benefit. We can actually maybe have more businesses in Plymouth. Um, we can keep businesses, you know, in Sutter Creek and not have any open storefronts. It's really to raise all tides. And I really feel that the next steps are nailing down, um, you know, the, the plan for governance, because, you know, as mentioned earlier about attorneys and outside, um, resources, that's to keep everyone's interests protected and covers all of the issues that were mentioned by our last speaker. Um, and also gives everybody that transparency and, um, you know, the direction for which this is going to be laid out. And so if you're concerned, be on the board. Understand where the marketing is coming from, be involved. Because as Lorenzo mentioned, we have a lot of people that voice opinion, but on a day-to-day, aren't necessarily involved. And we really want this to be something that includes everyone's involvement and really, um, you know, unifies the wineries within Amador County and bringing in more revenue. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other members, uh, public like to speak?
Good morning, supervisors. Uh, I just have...
Will you please state your name for record?
Earl Curtis.
Thank you. Earl.
From Amador Pines. I have one question that might, it might just be for general interest, is I've heard this thing about O2 or, uh, wineries or something, and maybe it should be made really clear whether this is going to include all wineries or all wineries with point of sale, or all wineries with only tasting rooms. And, uh, another thing is, and it seems to me that it would be appropriate for the supervisors to make a resolution that says, we recognize this activity that the Ventners Association is doing, but the minute we make an ordinance, that makes it mandatory for everybody and makes the county the enforcing agency. And I think that an ordinance is not appropriate. A resolution may be when it comes to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Greg, is that, um, do we become the enforcing body of this? If we have a, a third party taking care of it?
No. The ordinance, so the, so this is all done pursuant to the Streets and Highways Code. There's a Property Improvement District Law of 1994, and it lays out a process. Those statutes are included in your packet.
Right.
In addition, um, there's a ballot measure proposition on the November 2024 ballot that's called the Taxpayers Protection and Government Accountability Act. And one, if, if that were to pass, which is supposedly on its face retroactive to 2021, says any assessments that aren't passed pursuant to an ordinance, go away after one year. If, um, so anyway, this, but, this is to, to sort of pre-comply with this, this ballot measure that may pass. It's not technically required, but if we don't include it and that ballot measure passes, then this would go away because it wouldn't have been passed pursuant to an ordinance. So it's sort of just a piece of the process. It doesn't change the nature of what we're creating.
Do we have any... Do we have any liability for this ordinance?
Well, it's a county ordinance, but it's a county assessment either way. It's still, that's why the county has to do it. The county has the ability to do these assessments and require it. They couldn't do that on their own unless it was all voluntary.
I guess a question, what about the enforcement? Is there, I think the county does not want to be, at least I don't, I don't want to be involved in enforcement this period.
Well, the enforcement piece is a component of what HDL would deal with. So HDL or whoever they end up contracting with, presumably HDL because they can get the data that, you know, so they'll know what the fees are. They'll do the billing and they'll do the collections if it's necessary.
Could there be any scenario where somebody tries to say, "County, you have to go and enforce this"?
Potentially, but I don't think that's what the ordinance says. I think the ordinance says, "We'll do it or we'll have a third party do it." We're having a third party do it. And we can change it to say, "A third party will do it."
Yeah, because I saw a lot of things in here with the county. It'd either be a third party, the county, or a third party. I just think the county is out of some of these.
Well, the county has to do, yeah. The county, the third party is doing the assessment, the billing, and the collection.
Yeah.
That comes to that.
And what do you think, HDL, in the past, in a pretty reputable firm from all accounts?
Yes.
No problems?
No, they're pretty universally relied on by public agencies.
Thank you.
Jason.
My name's Jason Kazad, Kazad Family Vineyards. I just, I want to state for the record, I'm against this. And there's been people here today that made points, good points on both sides. I can see the benefit of it to our county and our tourism. But what I don't like about it is the forced aspect of it. I think even though there might be an outside organization actually doing the enforcement without the county's authoritative position, there's no way they can do this. And I don't like force. I think if this organization wants to increase tourism, why don't they court us better and ask us for funding? And do it, let's do it voluntarily. Let's not bring the government in to force us to do this. And then the second thing that I have a problem with is the long-term ramifications of developing an organization like this. Normally, they don't get smaller. They get bigger and more intrusive in our lives. And I could see 20, 30, 40 years from now, an organization like this telling my kids or my grandkids how to farm, what to farm, things like that, that we would never, never think that's why we put this organization in place in the first place. So those are my two main concerns. I think the other concerns have been addressed today already. Thank you.
I think we've got a Zoom call up there.
Thank you, we have two. We'll start with Mr. Parker. Go ahead when ready, please. I don't see him currently, but we can go ahead with Ms. Burkner. Go ahead on mute on your end.
Hi, thank you, Board of Supervisors. Tracy Burkner, a business owner in Plymouth with Rest Hotel and Taste Restaurant and also the current Vice President of Visit Amador. As a business owner in Plymouth, Rest Hotel relies heavily on the Amador Wine Region visitation. And over 80% of our guests come to visit the wineries or conduct business with the wineries. I've heard a lot of concerns about the Wine Heritage District. My mom always told me that if I didn't agree with something, that I should get involved and understand it and be part of it so that I could know if I was making the right decision. And I encourage those who are concerned about this to ask those questions and come to meetings or schedule a meeting with someone at the Ventners Association currently. The Amador Ventners are team players. And they understand the concept of the rising tide raises all boats. The Wine Heritage District will ensure that, in addition to education and benefits for the Ventners, that there's going to be more awareness of Amador as a great place to not only enjoy wine, but history, the outdoors, and support all of us local small businesses. So I encourage those who are against this to be part of the solution and join in and help everyone be successful in our community. We have to work together to be successful. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep.
Mr. Parker, go ahead when ready, please.
Thank you, Russ Parker. Neither for nor against. The two consistent beats that I've been hearing from all the speakers are around, you know, how is there going to be accountability to all, you know, involved with this? But then as well, the mandatory participation. So I think in whatever goes forward, if we can figure out a way that it's either opt-in or that there's a method to, for people to opt out if they just don't want to be involved, would be beneficial. And hopefully, it's such a wonderful thing that everyone wants, you know, to be, to opt into it or to participate. But people don't sound like they want to be forced to do something. Thank you.
Thank you. It's got to be somebody else out there wants to talk. Here we go.
Hi, I'm Jeff Runquist. I'm sitting on the fence. I understand the need for this type of an arrangement. The Amador Ventners Association and their methodologies for raising funds to exist and to further their goals. I've realized that that's not sustainable. The pandemic and the means by which they generated a vast majority, I want to say 70 to 80% of their budget, were events that were canceled during prohibition. So there's tremendous motivation to search for and find a alternative means to fund this organization. Why don't we just raise dues? I've been here--
Could be simpler.
Enough to see two motions to raise dues be voted down by the membership.
No question for you on that.
Yes.
Your dues are set rate, correct?
Correct.
Everybody pays the same.
Pardon?
Yes.
Everyone pays the same.
$7.50, isn't it?
Yes.
$7.50? You know, I could see if I was a big winery or a little winery, if I want to look at something really fairly and bring equity, which kind of, I mean, equity is kind of a bunch of garbage, but there is equity in reality, not the DEQ stuff. But I could see where maybe there should be a almost, basically, a scale. You know, a bigger winery might pay more than a smaller one. I mean, if you've got somebody selling 500 cases of wine and, you know, through a tasting room, and somebody's selling maybe 5,000 through a tasting room, which would be pretty, pretty good, maybe there should be a little difference in what they pay.
And this methodology proposed by the creation of the Amador County Wine Heritage District does just that.
Yeah.
And the idea--
I mean, as far as a membership--
And proportionality as to how the funds are spent in terms of determining who gets to decide how that money is spent based on how much they are contributing. We've had this conversation. It can be seen both ways. It's-- the devil is in the details.
And that seems to be a problem right now. I've heard a lot of--
And the semantics--
I'm kind of a little bit overwhelmed, to be quite honest, right now.
And the semantics are such that I'm listening today to different words being used for describing the same thing. And it, it, it's-- I think one of the speakers invited people to get involved and learn so that perhaps they don't use the word "tax" and instead use the word "assessment." But I also agree that a more defined goal-- because I think something as simple as a goal of grow the assessment, pretty simple. How do you grow the assessment? By advertising in New York. Can you justify it? How would that work? No. Your goal is to bring more people in to perform transactions that are subject to Amador County sales tax. That's how this is determined. The more those sales go up, the more this organization has to grow that snowball that hopefully just keeps getting bigger and bringing more revenue to the folks that are being assessed. The concept has a lot of merit. But again, it's the details of how it's administered. And the idea of knowing exactly how, and rather than waving some papers up and criticizing things, when it says quite plainly on them, "Draft", get involved. Find out what the draft is, where it's going, how it needs to be addressed. I also feel very strongly that the initial board members and the folks that are going to, and how is the vote taken on approval of the new bylaws? Well, again, I believe it should be proportional. And just as how this--
Question on your proportional.
Yes.
Are you talking proportional on overall wine produced, wine sales? Or are you talking about sales within the county?
Exactly the same methodology that you're being presented with as to who is in favor and who is not. And Jane, I wish Jane would understand that this is not a ballot process. This is a petition process.
Because the reason I ask that question is there's some wineries have big outside sales where they may not sell much. I'll just say, say Tierra de Oro, they produce a pile of wine out there. I don't think they sell that much at their tasting room. Probably a fair bit, but-- so where, what weight are they going to have in this process?
Well--
That's a question I'd have.
They're good, I would propose that they would have the weight in the process by exactly how much weight they had in the process and how important their signature on a pro petition document leads you to believe that they're support for it. And that's based on their sales, their taxable sales--
In Amador County.
In Amador County.
Yeah. I think it'd have to go back to that, I would think, really.
Yes, and I think the proportionality needs to be based on that. Not the tons that are produced, not the cases that are produced. We've been through this before. But--
Mr. Runquist, I was reading your emails yesterday. I kind of got the feeling that your problems are on the governance that you were on the fence, but thought we needed something--
To solve the governance, I'm all for it.
So, and I read between farther in that you liked a weighted vote, but you wanted to make sure that the weighted vote represented is represented on the Board of Directors.
Correct.
Is most important.
It's my understanding--
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that I had that.
Well, it's going to be based upon, to the extent that the bylaws enable the Board of Directors and convey upon the Board of Directors a certain amount of authority. Yes.
Okay. That's a reasonable thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How are we doing today?
Good.
Good.
My name's Spencer Jones. I'm the President of the Amador Wine Growers Association. So I represent all the farmers in the region. I'm also the son and winemaker at Iron Hub Winery. First, I just want to say, coming from Davis, you know, how under the radar Amador County is as a wine region. All my cohorts, when I was in the master's program there, everyone to every other region besides Amador County. So I just want to emphasize that. I think a lot of folks don't appreciate how under the radar this region is. I also want to emphasize how my family winery here, we don't distribute at all. 100% of our sales were around 5,000 cases in our tasting room at Iron Hub. And I think, you know, this fear of control, of power and grab, well, actually, there's a really nice buffer zone on this because if you consider the larger wineries that are producing maybe 100,000 cases, guess what, probably 80, 90% of that is going to a three, you know, three-tier system out of this county to a distribution in Sacramento, the Bay Area. So there's a really nice buffer with that because that means it's only directed to consumer in the tasting room. So--
You know, one, just one second there. I do agree with you on that. Something, one problem I see a little bit is okay. So they're not, they're not going to have that much weight or pay that much, you know, compared to what they produce or have that much weight in the bottling process. Only thing I look at, though, as well, if they are setting, if we're going to raise up the awareness of this area, some of the wines that they're selling and distributing outside the area, they'd be getting a benefit from as far as marketing. And they're probably not paying for that. So there's a little, it's a little bit of a, I can see a little bit of a rub there.
Yep. Yeah, but we're, yeah, I mean, as a sense of this region, we're all in this together, right? When folks come out to Amador County, guess what, they're not just going to one winery. Typically, they're going to two, three, so maybe five. But another thing I want to highlight is you look at this Board of the AVA and look at the wineries that are represented. It's not all these large wineries. It's very small wineries, medium-sized, and maybe one large. So there's really, if the folks that are criticizing here today and incredibly skeptical, you know, like what Runquist was just emphasizing, get involved. As the association for the wine growers, you know, folks have a lot of opinions. And when it comes down to it, to actually coming out to meetings, to my board meetings, very minimal input. So I just want to emphasize how this potentially could be a huge step forward for our wine region. And especially, this is not my family's retirement. This isn't our write-off. This is truly our livelihood. So I think it's really important to see, you know, the wineries right now are not doing well. Look at all of them coming up for sale. Right now, margins are really tight. And so this would be a great step forward for our region. And, you know, the folks that are really concerned, they can get involved and have input. It's not, you know, look at our AVA. We've been struggling for the last six years, huge amounts of turnover. Folks aren't getting involved and not sticking around because they're getting frustrated and walking away. So I just hope you consider that, how this can really benefit our family-owned business. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go through everybody first, Robert, and then we'll come back for second by the apple. So any other member of the public like to comment?
Almost good afternoon to you guys. I'm Steve Havel.
Almost good afternoon to you guys. I'm Steve Havel. Uh, my family owns Bella Grace Vineyards. My family, we do reside in Ione. I am also one of the board members of the Amador Vineyards Association. This is my second term. Uh, we've kind of gone through this. I started in COVID. As as was echoed, we we really ran out of money. Um, we didn't have any because most of our funding comes from events. And as you've heard from almost every member, the one thing we can all agree on is we hate the events as a funding mechanism. Um, one, it puts a lot of strain on the infrastructure for the wineries. It puts a lot of infrastructure strain for Amador County because we get all these people who come up all at once. And and I don't know if if the best option for us is to keep doing that because what's going to happen is more members are going to leave the association because it just doesn't make sense. So we came, when we found this ability to have this funding mechanism, I'm I'm supportive of it as a board member. And it's one of those things that we we found is a way to increase our funding, to raise the tides of all the wineries. I am a coming in second generation Amador County. We've only been here since 2006, so not very long. My family's going to be here forever. Um, we never want to leave. I always want to sell wine. And and for us to be able to do that, we we have to find a way to have a sustainable tourism in Amador County and and we truly believe that this is the way to do that. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you, guys, and have a good morning.
Thank you. Any members of the public? I see some faces back there. I haven't said nothing yet, so. Uh, Robert, this is this is it. It's your second chance. Yeah, me too. It's got to be on record.
So this is where I left my pen.
That's why he came back.
Yeah. Uh, you know, there's one common thread you see, and that is the issue of fairness. Some people think it's one thing. Some people think it's another. That's normal about opinions on fairness. And that needs to be specified. It needs to be agreed before we do this. You don't lock somebody into a room for five years and say, we get to decide later on when you or if you get a key. I I'm all for this. I was on the original board for this. Unfortunately, my mom got sick and I had to take care of her, so I had to drop off of it. But it's a matter of, at this point, there's not a person here that didn't say, we're all for raising more money. We're all for doing that. Who the heck isn't? But the fact of the matter is, it's how you do it and how you specify it. Now, everybody said, well, get involved. Here's a little problem. As I said, we have had a lack of participation. And I've had conversations with a lot of people over the last couple of days about why people don't participate. They don't participate because they don't think they're being listened to. And they don't participate because maybe meetings aren't held at a time because if they're out like me, I should be out in my vineyards right now. But I'm here. It used to be supervisor meetings used to be in the evening. I know that because I attended a few back then because that's when it's available. So having meetings maybe when they're available, the association, would be a good thing. Because some of us are small farmers. And then the issue of also, you have to believe that when you participate, you are listened to. We are in the midst of a family squabble. Amador Vineyards. How to assess, what to spend it on. It's as simple as that. Creating this organization is not in any way, shape or form going to solve that. It isn't. It's going to lock a bunch of boards members into a totalitarian basis that is based on board. I love all the people that come over here and call themselves some medium sized wineries. Fact of the matter is, the ordinance says that one third of the wineries by definition have to be declared large. One third. So I mean, a lot of people that spoke here are probably going to fall in that large category. They get the majority of the votes. Again, the details haven't been worked out and we tried for two years. You can't tell me that a group of people can't figure out consensus amongst people that live in their area and do care to the point that they're here. We do want to solve it. This isn't the way. The association that they're trying to propose may be the way it's chosen. It just needs to have the details fleshed out. When you go to buy a car, you don't go, I'll take the car and you tell me later how much I'm going to pay for it. This thing needs the details fleshed out. All I can request is that you say, go do your homework, come back with something that has the consensus of all of its members. And then maybe we can address this. But right now, this is way putting the cart before the horse. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you. Anybody new? I think, uh, yes, the lady in the back there, uh, Sherry here.
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me?
Pull the mic towards you.
There, is that better?
Yeah, yeah, no, up just a little bit. There you go.
Thank you. I'm Jennifer Hausler. I'm from Cooper Vineyards. Um, Dick Cooper was my dad. I know that the members of the Amador Vineyards Association have put a lot of work into creating this and a lot of work over the last few years, talking with the try, they tried to talk with everyone who had an O2 license and alleviate concerns. They've tried to come up with things that would make satisfied almost, you know, everyone that they could. It's not possible to create something where everyone's happy. But um, I do agree with Jeff that there needs to be some, you know, there needs to be some things that are nailed down. So it's more specific, but we are done a lot of work and we're on the right track. So I think we can solve these problems and I don't I really think we can do it in a minimal amount of time also. So I please consider this. You heard some people who aren't in favor of this, but really there haven't been that many people who have spoken against this. There are a lot of people who are for this and it it will be really good for Amador County if we, I believe, if we do pass this. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And Sherry?
We got another one.
Okay, what, hold on, Sherry, we got a new person back there.
Good morning. Um, new, okay, so I'm a new uh, member to probably one of the youngest members of this of the wineries.
Recognize the habit, not the face.
Yeah, yes. So a new owner of Driven Sellers. Uh, Driven Sellers has been around, I think, first bottled in 2005. Longtime wine club member became winery owner. So uh, I've owned businesses in the past.
What's your name, please?
Robert, I'm sorry. Bob Andre. Okay, um, I didn't, I don't have anything prepared, but I I I am in favor of it. I think that uh, and I was looking for an article that I had, it was written a couple of years ago, talking about the hidden gold. A wine region that very few people are familiar with, but yet win a lot of awards for the wines that are that are grown here in this region. And I think that with this plan, it will allow us to reach out, bring people more into this region, just like Napa did. I I I don't think, we don't want to become Napa, and I think the customers, what I feel, that come in, don't want us to become Napa either. But I think there's a lot of potential for uh, growth uh, for the region, the the wineries, the hotels, everything that else is here. I'd love to see Plymouth uh, develop, you know, even closer to Seta Creek, you know, it's and I think that this will allow all businesses to thrive. I think the county will will grow from it. And I think that uh, I, yes, there are some details that that have to be figured out. Are you going to get everybody to agree to every to one thing? No. But I think if we get the majority to agree to a good plan, which I think is is put in place, there's some details that might need to be ironed out, but I think it's, I think it's a great plan. I think there's been a lot of work put into this. And and I'd I'd hate to see it pushed aside. I mean, because I I truly feel there's a strong benefit to to uh, Amador, the businesses, the people that live here going forward. So I I I am for it and hopefully it gets approved.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, pull the, hold on, Sherry. You know what, Sherry, just wait a couple minutes. I'm like, everybody hasn't spoken first. Just 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 take a few seconds where you come up and give people a chance.
That's fine.
Okay.
Hello, everybody. I'm Mary Ann Rittenhouse from
Oh.
Ruby Dew Ridge Vineyard. And I wasn't going to get up and speak, but I came here when I looked at the draft on the um voting rights for small and large wineries. Basically, I'll tell you right now, I'm on the fence. Amador is suffering big time because nobody knows about Amador. You mentioned it to them. They think we're Amador, uh, Amador Lake or somewhere else. They don't know anything about wine here. Uh, our winery is in Fiddletown, the most beautiful, beautiful place of Amador County in my mind. We have views of the valley. People come up to us and low traffic, slow, low traffic, come up to our our vineyard, our win winery, and they're amazed, totally amazed with what we have. I started this late in life. I don't have the energy to probably continue much longer because we don't get enough traffic. I can't hire people to come in and do the job that I'm doing on a weekly weekend basis. I looked into getting into TALK to get reservations. And out of this district, there are only like three people from Amador County that are in TALK to get reservations. Maybe reservations don't bring traffic. But it does bring recognition. And TALK right now is offering a three year, if you get on a three year contract with them, $99 to get your winery on board. Out of the wineries on board, we have Turley, we will have Waldrother and Rumbauer. That's it. It's on that TALK. I don't know what can be done, but if something isn't to be done soon, this industry is going to fail. The vineyards in this county right now have been dropped from contracts with from the big consolation wineries, all Gallo, you name it. And people are not going to be even producing fruit this year. What is Amador County going to do to help? The wineries, the vineyards, the farmers. We're in the Williamson Act. We have a lot of benefits on our property. Again, we're on a rural road on Tyler Road in Fiddletown that's poorly managed, maintained. It's it's disgraceful. I don't know what can be done, but something has to be done to enlighten people about the beauty of this county. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other members like or public like to comment? Um, Sherry, go ahead.
Sherry Curtis again. Uh, part of the economic problem for wineries is the economic problem for all businesses. When you're trying to bring people to your area. One of those is the gas tax cost, the price of gasoline. People can't afford it if they're on fixed incomes to keep traveling in large distance. So so I just want to make one comment. It seems like a prominent member of the legislature had once said, just pass the bill. We'll find out what's in it later. That is not good governance. You are here to govern for the public, not for private wine industries. We have spent thousands of dollars giving to Council on Tourism Chamber to advertise our county. Nowadays, we have social media that can help advertising. It doesn't cost that much. So it's to me a problem with our wineries that they have to work it out. It's their private businesses and I don't see it's the job of the county to assist those because they're too big to fail attitudes that if they fall, all of us are falling. All of us have to pay taxes. All of us want to see growth in our business communities. Where I live, there's hardly any growth at all because our county tried to take away the commercial properties along Highway 88. And it it didn't help our area. So I just ask you to find out what's going to happen before you adopt a law. A law is a law. Ordinance is a law. And there could be challenges later that could affect the county. So please do your due diligence. Have all these things down before you adopt something that takes five years to get rid of. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you again for your time. I think this is a lovely proposal. I think that it works. I think it'll bring sales tax to the county. I think it'll fund the marketing without putting the bonus of these events that in times of pandemic, as we just saw, you know, we lost all our money. I think that it's super important to do this and that we need it. I just think that we need an amendment that makes sure that it's fair, that small wineries are included. That somehow there's a specification with regard to the marketing dollars so that the larger memories that excuse me, wineries that have the disproportionate share of power on the board can't vote, not that they would do this, but that they vote, okay, let's spend all the money in New York. That's where we sell a lot of wine, or probably not New York, but maybe New Jersey. So let's pass it. Let's put an amendment, making sure that all the small wineries are still represented. And um, bring more set tail sales tax revenue to this county and put the money in the pocket of the vendors as well so that we can stay in business. The wine industry is challenged. And we need to support, we need your support and the tax dollars. And yeah, I get it's an assessment, but it is passed on in a tax. And with regard to the paperwork, we need to make sure that paperwork is written correctly and implemented correctly. And I I don't think you guys can pass a draft. I think that it needs to be dialed in so that there's no um, there's a problem in the next five years. And again, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to add a couple of points, but you know, what I heard through all this discussion, whether it's for or against is there's a lot of interest in understanding the governance and understanding the bylaws. And I apologize for any contribution to the confusion because people are quoting from working drafts from proposals that are um, very old to try to start to get people engaged on what should the governance be? What should the bylaws be?
They are now, John. They are now.
But the point is, is those were never part of the management district plan. They were intended to be part of the discussion amongst the family, as Robert says. And uh, you know, my my point is, I feel like there's probably a way to describe in sufficient detail what the governance would be and include that in the management district plan. But we also want to be careful because if we list, um, the county every year has an oversight responsibility to ensure that we stay within our categories. We do have expenditure categories, 68% for marketing, so much for education, so much for quality, so much for administration. And I know the county also has an interest which we've committed to. We're in discussions with HDL right now to ensure that in any event, this is cost neutral to the county, whatever the collection fee is going to be and whatever escalation might occur. Our expectation is that's going to be placed in the management district plan and durable so that the county can rely on it. And but the one thing I want to stress is if we put every detailed budget, every detailed marketing expenditure, and we put it into the management district plan instead of categories, that effectively creates a place where we make the county board of supervisors our governance because we would have to come to you every time we want to spend a dollar on marketing here versus marketing there. So that's why you keep it at the category level and have um, properly elected representatives of the members serve as the board. The detail ends up being things if you put in there, you may have the unintended consequences of having something in there that makes sense today that doesn't make sense in five years and you're stuck with it. So the idea is to create enough um, structure around it that people can have confidence. But by the same token, not make it so detailed in the in the management district plan such that you have no wiggle room to change anything over the course of the term. So yeah, I feel like what I heard is there's a, an interest for us to come back with something that addresses some of these concerns around government. that addresses some of these concerns around governance, and I'm committed to do that. I will say, and not to feel sorry for myself, but we've made a big effort to try to do outreach, and there have been circumstances where people could not participate. But hopefully through this meeting, there'll be an opportunity. We welcome people to engage. We have monthly AVA meetings. My phone number and emails on the directory, so I welcome the input and hopefully we can find a path forward. You're never going to satisfy everybody, but hopefully we can get enough momentum and critical mass that it, it does meet the intent. And then, just the last thing I say, I volunteered to do this not out of support for any particular constituency. I love this area. My family's been here since nineteen-eleven, and I just think the path we're on right now, for a variety of reasons, some external, some internal, that we need a more sustainable and focused source of funding and a commitment to grow this area in a rational way and get tourism to make an economic engine like the wineries thrive. Obviously, if sales tax revenue goes up, it's going to benefit everybody. The assessment will grow, county will benefit, and it's, it'll be good for everybody. So, I'm happy to listen to the supervisors and other directions that you may have, but those were the things I heard.
One question before you leave. Why not make it two years instead of five years? Build some confidence.
It's typically, it wasn't anything magical. There wasn't even a discussion about it. It's typically the first tranche that most of these do is five years. Probably takes a couple of years to get it up and running and worked out. But there was nothing magical about selecting that. It was just, what have others done? And most others have always selected five years.
I think two would be pretty short because you spend some of your money just putting it together.
Well, you have to, presuming this passes, you have to set up everybody's POS system. We have to set up a collection mechanism. There's no money that flows for many months after these are started. So, it's not as if, it's not as if the switch gets flipped the day that it got approved.
But wouldn't that allow you to make modifications? Instead of waiting five years, you would be able to make modifications after two years then, and improve it?
Well, we can make modifications throughout the five years, provided you have enough space within the management district plan that's approved by the county. I know these are kind of, seem like strange idiosyncrasies of the law, but the point is, is that that's why you keep things at a categorical level so that your expenditures, you have to conform with whatever the county approves as that management district plan becomes effectively the charter. So, you could either retain the necessary durability, but have it flexible enough that it could change over the five years, or you do shorter terms, but then you're going through this whole process again in two years, then.
Sometimes you have to go through the process again to build confidence. But I heard loud and clear from people, they want the language to be more concrete than what it is now. And they want it to be very understood, understandable by people. I think you need to do some more work on this before we approve the initial documents to go forward.
Yeah. The one thing I will say, and I don't disagree with you, but a lot of the, a lot of the comments around documents that it says this, it says that, those are not documents that are even part and parcel to this proposal. They were working drafts, they were discussion drafts for the membership to try to see if the people would coalesce around a given form of government. At the end of the day, a lot of people didn't engage, and so now people are engaged. And so, it took a public meeting to do that, and we clearly have some work to do between now and, and May fourteenth, or whenever the county may ultimately figure it out, but...
You know, I'll say that, John. I've seen this many times. There's something out there and as, you know, a board puts something out and it's floating around and nobody shows up, and it kind of goes through the process, meet down the eleventh hour, and all of a sudden, man, here it comes. And at that point, there's a lot of misunderstood information, maybe some information wasn't put out. I think we're at this, this point, I mean, you've got the bang. The people are here now, they're engaged. At this point, you might want to have a clean version, try to address some of the comments you've heard, put it back out and say, "Hey, there's, here's where we're at again," and see where it goes. I don't see the board, I don't hardly see the board move this forward today. I don't, I don't think so.
Well, no. And I think for today, I think it's, again, this was a public hearing, it's satisfied its intent to...
Public meeting, yeah.
Public meeting to get the public engaged and, and give them an opportunity to discuss. So, we'll, we'll take that feedback and, and deal with it. The only other thing I might mention, because I do think it's important relative to the family squabble, there was a discussion about why not do this voluntary? Why not just raise the dues and market on your own? The current AVA bylaws effectively say that a quorum is the entire membership, one member, one vote. So, what's ended up happening, there's been two efforts to raise dues, to satisfy the concerns, to do more marketing, and they failed, not necessarily because of yes or no, but for all the people that just opted not to vote, which because of having a full membership quorum, not voting is equivalent to a no. And so, we just have been stuck in this kind of inertia. So, this proposal hopefully gives us an opportunity to move it forward, and if we can get it right, then hopefully that'll be the case.
Just some comments I'd like to make. First of all, the one thing I'm really hearing is that you, you need something like this. You want something like this. There's not enough being spent. And I've heard people on the fence, well, I could say I'm on the fence too because I don't know how this is going to work out, but I do support it because I, as a person with a science background, I believe in experimentation. I think we need to find a way to make something like this work. And I think you need to flesh out some of the concepts around governance, collection, voting, metrics for success. How are you going to measure this? And then how the money will be spent so the small wineries are going to get the feeling that it's going to benefit them because I keep hearing that we're going to be advertising in New York or back east. And I can tell you, I've lived back there. You tell them the Shenandoah Valley, they think it's a place where half the Civil War was fought. You know, in Virginia. Another thing is, you know, maybe if it's a five-year with the sunset, maybe, I'm just spitballing here, and opt out in three years if someone is really adamantly against it. I don't know if I, I fully agree with that, but I'm just thinking, you know, out loud. But I think that, you know, we need to try to find something and move forward with it and, and see how it works out and measure it. Well...
I have a question for county council.
I think Pat's up here first.
No, I had my hand up too.
You mentioned May fourteenth. That is when we set the next date for this?
Well, I, I would...
I think that's a little ambitious.
I would defer to staff on that. I'm just saying that was the schedule that was originally...
Can we move, can we move that date?
So, that date has been set by the notice. So, if the board, so we have to have that hearing on that day. And if you want to, if the board wants to continue it to another future date certain, at that time, you can, but...
Okay.
We can't change that May date now.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, I think if we do, if we have that hearing on that date, unless things change equal, we'll have the hearing, open up, hopefully not much comment, set a date certain down the road and...
But that date would have the...
Need more time.
The document we're approving today would be the document that comes with...
You're not taking any action today. This is just a public meeting comment. The only action you would take...
Waiving the reading on the ordinance?
On the ordinance.
That ordinance would be the ordinance we would vote on that day.
Well, you'd do two things. One, you'd create the district and you'd adopt the ordinance. You wouldn't adopt the ordinance if you're not going to create the district. They go together. So, you would put them both on that same day. You'd have that hearing. Either this is all resolved, this, the governance issues that I think people are talking about, or it's not, and you, you would move them both.
Can we continue this meeting until...
You wouldn't con, no, there's another public hearing. So, the, in May, it's a...
That would be a public hearing.
That's a public hearing.
And at that point, we would try to adopt the ordinance and all of that.
Or not.
Or not. But maybe we continue this meeting and come back with further input, more details on some of the concerns that people had.
We only have two weeks.
Well, I think what we could do is we could...
Why do we only have two weeks?
We can make a decision...
Our decision is May fourteenth.
We can, can't we push this back?
Greg, can't we make a decision here and go, go forward? Have the public hearing, and if it's not resolved, we can continue the public hearing to a future date.
Yeah, you can continue the, I just don't know that there's much difference between, the public hearing could serve as mu, as much as keeping this open. Everything you could do is...
But why, why are we limited on time?
You're not limited on time. It was just, it was just set because you had to send out notice.
Okay.
And so, the notice says it has to be... You can't continue, you can't move the May date already, or you have to re-notice everything.
Okay, well, we can have the May date, and then we can continue from there, correct?
Yeah, May date is a public hearing on the same thing.
It's all procedural, yeah.
Yeah, it's just required to, it just required to...
Are you good?
Two public meetings. This is called a public meeting, the next one's called a public hearing.
He wants a question.
Richard, you had a question?
I got that clarification out of the way. I just want to make a couple, not so much questions, but in many ways, this is like county governance. The State Association of Counties, fifty-eight counties, we would get outvoted by LA and the bigger counties every time. There is a proportionality rule on voting for counties, but the bigger counties will cede to voting, one vote per county. We've never, in my history, one time it was considered, but we've never gone to a proportional type of vote. So, there's that respect there. I don't expect, I expect that to be different with wineries because you have people actually putting their own money in, not taxpayer money. So, and the other thing is Supervisor Axon, I sat on the, the Winery Ordinance Revision Committee this year. You were very involved with the AVA. And I'll tell you, the same statement I made before is that we've, we've asked the AVA over my twenty-four years on the board twice to revise the ordinance, and they failed miserably because everybody has different ideas, small, medium, large wineries. That's why we decided this time to take it in our own hands and do it with input, and it worked very well. AVA was invaluable with the input, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
One thing I'd like to add to what Supervisor Forster just said is, going back to CSAC, they also do, the one other thing is the president is always rotated. It's rural, it goes to urban, and then...
Suburban.
Suburban, excuse me, suburban and urban. So, that's just another thought process.
Maybe the board needs to be reconstituted every year.
So...
You know, I think at this time, we'll close a public meeting, and the board's just going to talk a little bit about it.
Yeah, you could close the public, close the public hearing. I mean, public meeting, I'm sorry. And then, and then you will have to take action on the ordinance, if you want, to waive the reading and put it over to that, the hearing in May, so that at least everything's lined up.
Question, Greg, never had a public meeting necessarily open and closed. Do we need a vote on that closure?
Probably.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to close the public meeting.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Here's unanimous.
Now, Greg, we need a motion to waive the reading and go to the public hearing on May fourteenth.
Could you wait in a second? I had a couple of comments.
We haven't talked about this enough.
Well, I hadn't, and since, Mr. Prue. No. You're probably right, but I think one thing I, I see is, you know, I think Mr. Kazad said it, basically it's taxation. Anyway, we have enough to go forward, but I'd just like to put something on the record. I'd like to see overwhelming support going forward if I'm going to support this. And so far, I haven't seen it. So, I suggest, need to get together and talk to everybody because I mean, it's, if it's not overwhelming support, I'm not going to go for it. It's, has to be. And that's really one, one to put out there. I think the governance as far as who appoints the board members, I think there's going to be some concern over that. Maybe you get that inform, maybe get some information out to everybody again, just laying it out, make a few changes. I think that'd probably be helpful. So far, it seemed like there's not clarity. I don't know, I don't know if that's just because old information's come out and bounced back and forth or what, but you need to get a clean version, make sure people get it, and go from there. Anyway, okay, that's all I wanted to say.
Supervisor, now I kept a little tally. There were seventeen speakers, nine for, five against, and three on the fence. So, it was kind of split.
What was your numbers again?
Nine, five, and three.
I had nine, six, and three, but okay. And the wineries were, wineries were eight and five.
Greg, when do we get to edit this? What, you know, you were...
If you have comments on the ordinance, we would do that now.
Okay. Because the one thing I would like to see coming out of here is point zero eight zero collections. I want to see the, where it says the county or...
A third party.
Yeah, it says or a third party, but I don't want the county involved.
That's going to be scratched. Didn't we already answer that question?
Well, we, we can, we can do it that way, or we can leave it and just as, just to have that option. I mean, I guess the question is, if the, if the county's costs were covered, maybe the county would want to do it. I mean, the, the point is...
I guess what you're saying, you leaving, and we still have, we still say we're not doing that.
Yeah, you still have the right to not do it. Say, you're doing, it's, this is happening through a third party. That's, it leaves the discretion to the county. And I don't think, I don't think this ordinance, so if it weren't for that ballot measure, the proposition that's pending, you wouldn't have an ordinance. And you'd be doing, you'd be taking the same action. It'd be through a resolution, you'd be creating the same taxing assessment district with the same language.
So, and, and so...
So, I don't think this changes, sorry.
No, I was just going to say, is it, so down the road, we get a new development in there, and they have a private road on there. This type of ordinance would have to go for that road association?
No, this only deals with, this only deals with...
Even though they're doing just an assessment?
The Wine Heritage District. This is only creating the Wine Heritage District.
I, you know, for me, I still don't like the county involved in this portion of it.
Yeah, I'm kind of on the other fence. I think our county staff have enough to do without being involved in this.
Agreed.
That's what Jeff was saying, yeah. I, I think it's pretty clear we don't want to be involved in it, and Greg's just saying it gives an option if there's some reason, maybe need a little, some particular circumstance comes up where we need to be involved a slight bit, we could be.
Yep.
I just, you know, it's under collections. I just, it doesn't need to, that's where I have the, the problem with, if it was under management or any other type of...
Well, we make those decisions. It's pretty clear we don't want to be in them, so I think generally, we're not going to be in them.
If, if the board wants to take it out, we'd take it out. Just give, be direct, you know, if there's a consensus on direction.
So, you would leave that just blank as...
I would leave it in the alternative, the way it is. With the understanding that the county does not intend to do it and will, unless it becomes economically feasible for the county to do it. And because of the way, we don't have a mechanism, we don't have the staffing, it just, they'd much rather pay HDL to do it for less than try to pay the county.
I think as long as we're not mandated, we can leave that in there. But I don't intend to, I don't, I don't intend for the county to be involved in that. That's kind of where I'm at. Yeah, so I'm just, I'm just basically give us a little flexibility, something comes up, we need to be involved, and a little bit, we could, but I don't want, I don't want to be stuck in it. I agree, I agree with you.
Under that paragraph, we don't need to be in the collection side of the house.
Well, I mean, if, there might be instances where it needs some information or something, and then could somebody say, well, you know, that's all I'm looking at, just trying to give a little flexibility, but...
I understand where you're going, but it, you know, it just doesn't, we don't need to be in that portion of this, you know, as, you know, then we're squabbling between the family of the wine... You know, as, you know, then we're squabbling between the family of the wine, the.
If, if you wanted to take it out and there became a problem, we could amend the ordinance and put it back in.
Yeah, I'm fine either way, if that's the case. Well, looking for a motion to.
There's a motion on the floor.
Okay, yeah, you need to make.
To waive the reading, to introduce, waive the reading, and schedule on.
So introduce the resolution, waive the reading.
Ordinance.
Introduce the ordinance, waive the reading, and.
Schedule for possible adoption on that.
Adoption on May.
As a public hearing.
Fourteenth as a public hearing. That's my motion.
Already made that motion.
Yeah.
Oh, you did, Frankie.
And Brian had to talk about it.
There's an echo. I'll second your motion then.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
So we got three ayes and two nays. Carrie's three to two. And I think the motion was by Crew, second was by Axe. Thank you. I would say at minimum, anybody, when we have our next public hearing, anybody that's interested, at minimum, send us an email, a phone call, something. We need to know where you're at and if, if the concerns have been addressed. Just because we scheduled a public hearing doesn't mean it's, it's gonna happen. It's just, see if we can flush out what the concerns are. Thank you. We're to take a break now, we'll come back. Oh, twenty after.
Twenty after, okay.
20 after, okay.
All right, thank you, John. Any members of the public like to comment on this issue? Up, seeing none. We're to move on. Item 4E, so, presentation regarding water safety by Mercy-Harlem Public Health. We'll hold that over to a future meeting. And so, we're going to move on down to 4F, this administrative agency. Discussion of possible action relative to amending section 19.30.020 regarding non-commercial kennel regulations. Mr. Spencer.
Yes, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I've brought forward four ordinances for introduction today. And they're really just cleanup items, cleanup issues. And, and three of them relate somewhat to planning, so.
You lost them.
Chuck can be made available if any questions come up.
You may pull that mic up a little bit, too.
Okay. And then, one is, Terry's here from the Corridors Office, because one of them relates to recording matter. So, I'll just go through them. 4H being the first. This is, it's just a cleanup of the kennel regulation. There's a change to, to one of the, to a code section that, we eliminated a code section that doesn't exist, and replaced it with the appropriate code section. Just an error, fixing an error. And the other is, we struck the word "nondiscretionary" before the word "use permit", because that's, creates, it's incorrect. These use permits are actually discretionary. Even the staff-level use permits are discretionary.
So, these are the changes for this?
Yeah, that's the only, those are the only two changes.
So, can I, I'll make a motion to waive the reading of the ordinance and schedule for adoption on the April 23, 2024 consent agenda?
Second. I have a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Under discussion. I gotta laugh, as a, I never knew what a non-commercial kennel was. Had to look that stuff up.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Kerry's unanimous, and motion was by?
Ax.
And the second was by Brown. I missed those, so I'm going to make sure, got the record for you. Moving down.
To 4G. This is the, this is the amendment to section 3.20.120 regarding requirements for recording documents. And this is, this is in response to a, an amendment to the Revenue and Taxation Code. And these items, as I understand, were, members of the public could record them on, on separate documents. Now, they're required to put the information on the, on the front page. And that's really what this is about. So, the, if there are any questions about this, I think Terry can answer.
So, these are all the changes here on page one of two?
Yes.
So, it's just a bunch of strikeouts, it looks like?
Yeah, a bunch of strikeouts.
All right.
Motion.
I'll make a motion to waive the reading of the ordinance and schedule for adoption on the April 23, 2024 consent agenda.
We have a motion by Ax, second by Crew, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Kerry's unanimous, moving down to 4I.
4H, this relates to staff use permits. And this relates to, to that first ordinance that we discussed. Removing the "nondiscretionary" term. And this is just to clarify and make it, make the process more clear, and also to make it consistent. Because throughout the, the code, the staff-level use permit process is, is outlined in certain sections. And, and this is just so that we have the directions clearly where they, where they should be, which is in the staff level, staff use permit section itself.
So, this underlined section is brand-new, or is it?
Yes.
That's all new?
That would be the amended addition.
I'd like to make a motion this time.
Okay.
I'll, I'll move to waive the reading of the ordinance and schedule for adoption on April 23, 2024 consent agenda.
Second. Okay, a motion by Forster, second by Ax, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Sorry, Pat made the second.
Actually. Is there any, any members of the public like to comment on this item? Sorry. Moving on, this is 4H.
4H, this relates to staff use permits. And this relates to, to that first ordinance that we discussed. Removing the "nondiscretionary" term. And this is just to clarify and make it, make the process more clear, and also to make it consistent. Because throughout the, the code, the staff-level use permit process is, is outlined in certain sections. And, and this is just so that we have the directions clearly where they, where they should be, which is in the staff level, staff use permit section itself.
So, this underlined section is brand-new, or is it?
Yes.
That's all new?
That would be the amended addition.
I'd like to make a motion this time.
Okay.
I'll, I'll move to waive the reading of the ordinance and schedule for adoption on April 23, 2024 consent agenda.
Second. Okay, a motion by Forster, second by Ax, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Sorry, Pat made the second.
Actually. Is there any, any members of the public like to comment on this item? Sorry. Moving on, this is 4H.
4H, this relates to staff use permits. And this relates to, to that first ordinance that we discussed. Removing the "nondiscretionary" term. And this is just to clarify and make it, make the process more clear, and also to make it consistent. Because throughout the, the code, the staff-level use permit process is, is outlined in certain sections. And, and this is just so that we have the directions clearly where they, where they should be, which is in the staff level, staff use permit section itself.
So, this underlined section is brand-new, or is it?
Yes.
That's all new?
That would be the amended addition.
I'd like to make a motion this time.
Okay.
I'll, I'll move to waive the reading of the ordinance and schedule for adoption on April 23, 2024 consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Forster, second by Ax, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Kerry's unanimous, moving down to 4I.
This is the amendment to the Technical Advisory Committee section. And this, these amendments, they clarify the role of, of the Technical Advisory Committee, so that any new members, when they come, they can just take a quick look at the, at the chapter in the municipal code and, and know exactly what their, their role is. And, second, it's to add a new appeal process. And that is required by a new government code section. And that is for when the county does not, or chooses not to deem an application complete, a member of the public can now appeal that to the board. And third, this, this makes a slight change to the configuration of the, of the Technical Advisory Committee, in that it creates a voting member role now for AFPD. And it puts the Solid Waste Director as an alternative vote. So, this ensures the like, the greater likelihood of reaching a quorum also.
That includes, if the Environmental Health Director position is vacant, it would not be a staff member from Environmental Health that would fill then?
Well, I think, as it's.
It states in there, their alter, excuse me, their alternate.
Yeah, this, this has the director himself, or herself, as, as the voting member, as an alternate, if one of the five, one of the five is not there.
What if, what if one of the five is not there, and the Environmental Health Director's not there?
Then we've got four. And, and if, sometimes, you know, we have, we have a difficult time reaching a quorum.
Okay.
But as long as we have four, we're, we're good.
Okay.
What I'm asking for the, if, for expertise, if the Environmental Health Director position is not filled, then it would not be the acting, or do we have an acting?
We don't have an acting right now. I'm the acting.
We don't want you on there representing.
No, we don't.
Would it be the, another staff member?
We need to be able to appoint somebody, yeah, or, or.
That'd be helpful, yeah.
Yeah, and I'm looking at the section here itself, and it says, "Technical Advisory Committee shall be composed of the following county officials, or those officials designated alternate." So, if, if a director did designate an alternate.
Well, as long as that's allowable, then I think we're good.
Okay, very good.
Any members of the public like to comment on this? Seeing none?
I moved to waive the reading of the ordinance and schedule for adoption on April 23, 2024 consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Forster, second by Crew, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Kerry's unanimous.
Did you wait till I almost got to the mic?
Moving down to item 4J, this review and possible approval of the March 26, 2024 Board of Supervisors. Minutes?
I would move approval with a couple of changes, minor changes. One, one of them is on page two, the, we don't need to say unanimously twice.
Yeah, there was a few.
And there's one other minor change.
Their supervisor triple-X.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out who that was. Looking for a motion to approve with, with changes.
Oh, I already gave it to her, so. She knows. So, I'll second your motion. And then, there was like one little typo.
So, Forster did the motion, I think?
Yep.
Second by Ax, with changes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Kerry's unanimous.
Okay. So, we adjourned.
Chairman, we still have the addendum.
We have the addendum. So, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll tee it up for you.
What's that?
I'll tee it up for you. The addendum.
See it up?
Yeah, I'll give the background to it.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Okay.
I've got an addendum, it's item 4K, this is Senate Bill 1249. Discussion of possible action relative to chair and his signatures around a letter of opposition to the subject bill as related to circuiting federal due process protections for existing Americans of, or AAAs and the older American Act of 1965 and the Code of Federal Regulations.
Yeah, so basically, I attended the Area 12 Agency on Aging meeting last Thursday. And this Senate Bill 1249 is moving quickly, and all the small counties oppose it strongly. They feel like they're not being given a chance to give input or make any changes. And it may be a lost cause, but it's kind of a, a larger entity is kind of pushing this. This could actually completely change how AAAs will be in the future, if they, if they exist the same way. And, and I can't delve into all the details, but I think there were enough, there was enough support from the smaller counties to oppose it, to send a letter. And I felt, felt our board should send a letter directly to our Senator, and to the, the committee, the governmental committee as well. So, three supervisors already voted on it from Area 12, but I think we decided all the boards, from Calaveras, Tuolumne, and Amador, would all send a letter, too.
I sat on Area 12 on aging for a long time, and what it says in here is exactly right. This is going to take us backwards a long ways, by, by allowing or by forcing the counties to allow the state to take over the control of it, basically.
No, I'd, I'd agree with that, yes. It's, it's, what they're looking to do is, is not good.
I did email the Senator, and got an email back from Erica Arnick, Legislative Aid to the Senator, Alvarado Gill. And this bill gives counties the option to petition the CDA to assume control of the Area Agency on Aging that serves that local district. Upon current law, there is no defined core services AAA must provide, nor are they any metrics to track their effectiveness. And right then and there, it's telling me, they're, they want more bureaucracy adding on to what these people already do. I'm the alternate on the, on the, you know, aging, and they do a lot of metrics already. And this leaves inconsistent services that do not fully serve California rapidly growing older population. The bill helps to modernize and strengthen the state's aging services, which I don't believe.
Just going to hurt, hurt seniors ultimately.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, I think, you know, they should slow it down and try to take input if they, you know, want to make changes. Anyhow, I'll make a motion then to approve the chairman's signature on the letter of opposition to Senate Bill 1249. That gets included.
Okay. Any members of the public like to comment? Seeing none, we have a motion by Ax, second by Crew, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Kerry's unanimous. Now, we're adjourned until April 23, 2024, 9 o'clock.